Okay, we're recording. You can start.
Okay, great. Excuse me. Good evening. This is the Tuesday, April 27, 2021, regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of New Canaan, Connecticut. Lynn, if you could brief us on how you intend to run the meeting, please?
So we're using a Zoom webinar, so everyone can only see the commission members and some staff members on the screen right now. And everyone else is in attendee mood. And when we come to the public portion for each item as we go through it, and there are several items on tonight's agenda, when the your, when the public hearings opened and the chairman asks if anyone has comments, then at that point, you would raise your hand to speak on that specific item. And we would go down in order and allow each person to speak.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Let's do the roll call. John Goodwin, I am here. Mr. Chris.
Present.
Ms. Nielsen.
Here.
Mr. Radman.
Here.
Mr. Scornia.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Ward.
You're muted.
I am here.
Excellent. Mr. Williams.
I'm here.
Mr. Cassavan.
Here.
Mr. Herring.
Here.
Mr. Bash.
Here.
Okay, very good. Mr. Cassavan, for tonight's purposes, you are seated for an open, regular member seat. I do want to congratulate you, though, once you are able to swear yourself in as welcome to being a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, but
Thank you.
purposes, technically, you're an alternate serving for a, an open seat. Okay, but congratulations, Art.
Thank you.
Before we get going, I think commissioners, as most of you know, Jean Grislecki has resigned from the commission and 30 years of service. That's pretty amazing. Sometimes people refer to us as the hardest working commission in New Canaan, and may or may not be true. But what was true was that Jean was, over those years, the hardest working member on this commission. She was a leader in so many areas. She was a driver of the P O C D, more than one, multiple P O C Ds. She headed up the subcommittee for the implementation component of the most recent P O C D. She was extremely active in the downtown when we redid the, the local community standards for downtown. She sat on that committee with Lazlo, myself, and Kent. Frankly, if you name a subcommittee, over the years, Jean was on it. Jean always did all of her site visits. She pretty much visited, you know, every applicant, application that was on an agenda and not just, you know, the big ones. One thing that always amazed me was, over the years, she was always at downtown hall almost every day. And she became, you know, really an advisor to the planners that we had over the years. Jean always had a view. She was never shy or retiring. She did her homework and she took a view. And one thing I found in Jean's service was that her judgment was simply incredible. Is if Jean was on a certain side of an application and you were arguing against Jean, good luck. And I, to conclude, and, and by the way, the, the other thing I'd write, you know, what I'm saying is, is she always, she seemed to always get things right. And, and I think over the years, I, I know myself as an individual, both as a commissioner, as well as a chair, as well as the rest of the commission, you know, we, we relied upon that fact with Jean. So Jean, hopefully, as I said, I think I said you're watching and, and we thank you.
Great.
Okay, let's get on with the meeting. We have, we have a couple of public hearing applications in front of us. One thing I want to mention now, though, and I'll explain a little bit more when we get to the library hearing, is public input for this evening on the library will be somewhat limited. So I just want to give that heads up. And I'll explain that later as we go on. So let's start with the public hearing. Item number one, 117 Clearview Lane, upon application of Scott and Josie Wise, owners for special permit approval to allow the construction of an in-ground pool 142 feet from the front yard setback in lieu of 150 feet in the two-acre zone at 117 Clearview Line Lane. And this has to do with section 34C6. Then we ought to make sure that we get our reg section back in the, in our, in our application notices. Who's there to present, please?
Um, Josie Weiss is the applicant. And I just let her in. Are you there, Josie?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, wonderful. Hello, everyone, and thank you for having us on your agenda this evening and for the opportunity to discuss our project. Um, we are applying for the special permit because we would like to construct an in-ground pool 142 feet from the front yard setback. The way our home is positioned, the back of our house is facing what is technically the front of our lot. And because of this, it would appear on paper that we are placing, that we are looking to place the pool in our front yard. However, we are actually looking to place it in the rear of the house, in our backyard, right off of our back patio. There is adequate screening and trees surrounding our property, so we feel that this project will not affect our neighbors in any way. And I think that's about it.
Okay. Questions for the applicant, please?
You, yes, ma'am, as Commissioner John Chris, you mentioned screening. Could you provide some more detail on the screening situation that exists now and any that you anticipate installing in conjunction with a pool installation?
Yes, so we do have, it's a fairly heavily wooded area. So that would be the screening that we have in place right now that separates where we would like to place the pool between that area and the street. So that area itself right now is heavily wooded. But we do intend to, it is in the plan to have a retaining wall built right in front of that area as well, in which we further plan to plant more trees in that area as well.
I'm looking at the Google aerial map that you provided with the application. And along the right side of the driveway, as you enter the property, there seem to be, are they sand traps or? I'm not quite sure what they are. They look like sandy areas or?
It's a, a retaining wall on the right side of the driveway with a sort of little grass plateau. And on the right side is a existing retaining wall where our backyard and back patio are in the rear of the house. And there's a couple flower beds and trees and off to the right behind that is the heavily wooded area that my wife was referring to.
Mr. Weiss, kindly state your name for the record, please.
Scott Weiss.
Thank you.
About how many trees are you anticipating taking down in order to put in this intended pool?
There are no trees to take down. It's an open area.
So the trees that are there now stay there?
Yes, they would be behind the posterior rear section of the pool behind the retaining wall. There's no existing trees or structures in our backyard area.
So the retaining wall, so there's a flat area where the pool is and the, I guess, the area around the pool. Then there's retaining wall and then there's soil, so it's sort of below ground-ish, is what you're suggesting?
Yes.
And I assume there'll be fencing and so forth that's required under code?
There is a existing fence that already lives on the retaining wall. And then we'd have to continue that fence around to close in the pool.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners' questions for the applicant, please? Okay, looks like we're good. Would anyone from the public elect to address this application?
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Turner wants to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Ken Turner, just a quick question on the screen of the pool equipment. Where will it be located and how will it be screened from view?
The pool equipment, if you could pull the schematic back up of the property?
Give me one second, I'm gonna pull it up.
Okay. So you see the, the dwelling of the house and the proposed pool site there in the backyard. There's multiple options that we've discussed. The main spot would be sort of off to the, I'm gonna sort of look right at the map, and if you go due south of where the corner of the pool is, going on the map, yes, sort of in that region, move the arrow over a little bit to your left. Yeah, in that area, there's sort of a little drop in the woods line there. And there's some flat surfaces where we can sort of create a flat surface with a concrete slab and put the equipment, you know, hidden by some existing pine trees that are already there. The other options would be behind the retaining wall and the fence that's gonna go in that area. Yes, that's where the arrows, that's correct.
Okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
This is John Chris again. There are no plans for a pool house or anything like that?
No, no plans.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's take another shot at the public. Lynn, can you see if anybody, anyone from the people would like to address this application, please?
Give me one sec, just pan through the list. There are two people who have their hands raised. Josie Weiss, you're the only one with your hands raised. So everyone else's hands were raised, went down, so.
Okay, so we're all set, right, Lynn?
Like we are all set.
Okay, super. This hearing's closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, item number two, 711 Silver Mine Road, upon application of Mary Ann Nag, authorized agent for Gregory Burchelman, owners for a special permit approval to allow remodeling of existing attached garage to accommodate a telehealth business office where there are two resident principals and one non-resident employee and the possibility due COVID-19, more than five client visits per week for property in the two-acre zone at 711 Silver Mine Avenue, and that's section 33C3. Who would like to present, please?
I've got Mr. Burchelman here, and I'm looking for the rest of their team right now.
Mr. Burchelman, are you leading off or is someone else from your team leading off?
I'm happy to. Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Perfect. Okay, my name is Greg Burchelman. I live at 711 Silver Mine Road with my wife, Kathleen, and our family. I'm an IT professional. My wife is a physician employed at Stanford Hospital. Together, we operate a healthcare organization under a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Our organization uses telehealth to increase access to Catholic healthcare. After seeking advice from a town planning official, we've submitted this major home occupation permit for our home. This request is part of our project to remodel the inside of our garage into a home office that includes a telehealth studio that can also be used as an exam room. In addition to my wife and I using this space as a private home office, we also intend to use the space in the following way. Number one, we would like our part-time, non-clinical administrative assistant to work with us in person on weekdays only. We would like to invite up to two part-time, non-clinical interns to work with us in person, at least during the first part of their internship. One of these interns would be for the summer only, the other plans to intern with us for about 14 months. And we would also like to allow for Kathleen, my wife, to periodically see patients from the local community. By periodically, we mean an estimated real average of maybe zero to two patient cars per week. She's a pediatrician, so imagine, you know, a parent with one or more kids. And we think a maximum weekly average of no more than five patient cars per week, which maybe could mean about 10 total people. We also will not have any other non-resident people working in our home other than those already mentioned. And we are not opening a public clinic. And we appreciate and understand the concerns of our neighbors who did reach out to us who believe a major home occupation permit is both unlimited and permanent. But from our conversation with the town planning official, this is a misunderstanding, and we understand that the major home occupation permit comes with whatever limitations that you, the Planning and Zoning Commission, choose to make. So to address the concerns of our neighbors, we wanted to propose the following to explicitly limit the permanent nature and unlimited traffic concerns. Number one is to add an express limit on the permit that would not allow it to not follow a land transfer. And then also an express limit on the permit that the business-related traffic not exceed more than three daily visits by our staff, which I previously mentioned, and no more than a monthly average of five business-related cars per week for non-staff, that would be the patients. In addition, we wanted to point out that we're not seeking to change the footprint of our home, nor looking to put up signage nor lights or any other detractions. Also that Kathleen's not building a large private practice nor a public clinic out of our home. She's already got an 80% clinical position at Stanford Hospital, and she spends the remainder of her time as an unpaid volunteer administrator to our Catholic healthcare organization. Her personal clinical work is very limited, both by time and desire. In the unlikely event that Kathleen never left her Stanford job to open a full private practice, we would want to move all clinical work to a more suitable commercial space. And on a personal note, we have children who like to play outside and need to get to school safely, so excessive traffic and visitors would be an issue for us as well. So in summary, we'd like the town to grant us this permit, but we also would like to ask the town to consider including additional restrictions to protect the value and character of our neighborhood, as well as the interests of our budding neighbors and our desires to be upfront with our plans and comply with the P and Z rules and regulations. Our home's our biggest investment, and we also wanted to protect its value and the value of the character of our surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Burchelman. Anyone else to present on your team or you're all set?
We're all set for now, but we're happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions for the applicant, please?
Hey, James Bash. How would you envision the traffic limitations being enforced?
Well, primarily, the traffic limitations would be enforced by my wife not, you know, taking on patients, telling them, no, you can't come today. It's a private practice. She can make her own.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Burchelman.
I was just gonna say, it's, you know, she chooses when to see patients and when not to see patients.
This is Dr. Burchelman. Am I, can you hear me? Am I unmuted?
Yes.
I, I also do have the option of making house calls. These patients are few and for between. They're usually people that are referred to me because there are some significant, there's a concern that, and they're usually in some way hesitant to use a, another mainstream medical practice. It's usually a second opinion. And I'm usually fitting them in between my telehealth patients and other duties. And so the other option is for me to make house calls and then in order to comply with zoning, but it's, it's difficult for me to fit them in, that's all.
How often do you get in-day appointments? Appointments that are made, not made in the previous day or before that?
I mean, same day? Um, infrequently, I would say, I would say the majority of my, of my appointments have at least 24-hour advanced notice.
Okay. And what typically is the nature of the appointments?
Almost everything has been COVID testing.
I'm sorry, repeat that, please?
Almost all of my inpatient care has been COVID testing.
Thank you.
How much parking, this is Dan Radman, how much parking is on your site right now?
Well, we have two spots. We're, we're in a back lot. There, there's two spots that kind of face in front of our home. Not sure what you would call it, but like a, where the driveway kind of opens up and there's a little patch there. And then we have a, you know, a full two-car garage with, that's the part we're trying to remodel is, and then a full square patch, you know, suitable for that in front of it.
We feel we can accommodate six cars easily with plenty of space between them.
Is there a site plan that you have, other than what was in the application, that would show what that parking capability is? How much, how much is paved and how many spots there are?
I don't believe we submitted, you know, a drawing of the existing driveway with measurements, but we're not intending to create additional driveway space as part of this project.
Understood. We need to, we need to validate what you currently have with respect to the new use that you're proposing, that's all.
Sure. Should we submit drawings with dimensions? Is that what you would like to see?
Um, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll continue to talk about it. That might be one of the conditions.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yes, it's John Chris. When you say remodel the garage, can you be more specific on exactly what that means?
Sure. Okay, Kathleen.
There's a, there's a diagram submitted with the application that's very specific about the use of the space in the existing garage.
It's primarily office space for computers and things. There's only a small room in the corner. That's the studio.
So this is going to be where the cars go now or is this an upstairs?
Yes, it would be where the cars are now.
So you're gonna cannibalize the car parking space and turn it into an office?
Yes.
And what's above it is?
Attic.
Attic, that's usable, nonusable?
It's currently unfinished, but I mean, there's, there's good height there for usable space potentially, but it's not our intention to do that at this point.
How do you get to the attic?
There is a full-size door from an upstairs bedroom that leads into the attic. There's also a pull-down stairwell or ladder that's also in the garage that would be removed.
I, I noticed you're planning to put a sink in, so you have to install plumbing? Or is there plumbing in the, in the, in the?
Right, right, right behind the wall where the sink is in the diagram is our laundry stack. So the, the plumbing is essentially right there on the other side of the wall. And we also understand that, you know, provided this goes through, that we'll be working with other departments to, you know, validate the interior design, you know, according to whatever code and restrictions are there.
That, that was gonna be my next question. Have you reviewed this with the local, the town health department? I'm sure there's, with having this type of a, let's call it, testing facility, I'm sure there's some guidelines associated with sanitary and proximity of sink in relationship to work area. You know, isolation of certain components. Has that been reviewed or discussed with anyone?
Not at this point. I mean, this is the first step, you know, and if this, if it becomes something that is gonna go through and we're gonna be able to do this, then the, we would take those next steps as well. But we understand there might be adjustments to our drawing.
Is my, my understanding perhaps incorrectly, it's John Chris again, is that if you're running a medical office that is seeing patients in the flesh, which you are intending to do, that there are all manner of rules regarding how that office needs to be designed and other ADA access perhaps and so forth.
Right.
Yeah, we're aware of things like doors needing to be wide enough for wheelchairs and things of that nature.
We also have discussed with the contractor we're talking to, then a concrete pour for a wheelchair ramp, et cetera.
So James, there's, 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 there's more to consider on the ADA accessibility thing. If you're going to be accepting the public as patients here, you're also gonna probably need to provide an ADA accessible bathroom for their use. So just another thing you might want to consider, because obviously that would eat up a lot of space. I doubt you want people going into your home to use a bathroom.
There's actually, in the upper right-hand corner of the drawing, which we didn't display, but there are, we have a bathroom that's kind of in a hallway there that would be used if that was something that we needed to, to accommodate.
Yeah, but you have to go up a set of stairs to get to it, right?
Yeah, that's why my wife mentioned the ramp.
She mentioned the concrete ramp on the outside.
Oh, I'm not sure she meant the outside. The garage is at ground level.
Okay. Well, I think, I think personally, I think you have a lot more homework to do on this before we can reasonably address whether this is a viable modified or a special permit here. It seems like there's a lot of unanswered, unanswered questions as to the usage relative to health department requirements and handicap accessibility that you really haven't vetted yet. My personal opinion.
It's John Chris again. It's not just, I agree with Commissioner Radman, it's not just health department, but also fire marshal. You, you may need to be sprinklered, could be other issues that the fire marshal would be well-positioned to advise you on. But when you're operating a physician's office, there, there are lots of rules. And I think they can drive a significant amount of design decisions that you may not be aware of at this time.
Oh, James Bash, I'd also be interested in the level of disclosures that you've made to neighbors as well, whether that be tonight or in the future.
Yeah, I believe the neighbors receive letters, you know, as per our agent. And I believe that they've also submitted a letter to the commission. So yes, they're, they're aware of, of what we're asking for.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Turner had his hand raised before.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
The questions I was gonna ask were asked by Commissioner Radman. So I'm satisfied with that. I think it is very important to understand the circulation of the traffic and where people are gonna park. The house is on a, is, is on a, kind of on a high level and it's on a slope. And I'd really like to better understand two-way traffic on that driveway and how steep it is from the parking level to the street level.
Okay. Mr. Burchelman, can you, one more time, walk through your proposed conditions?
Sure, absolutely. So the conditions that we proposed were really to try to mitigate the concerns we've heard from our neighbors about the permanence and the unlimited nature of a major home occupancy permit. And so to that end, we wanted to offer, you know, these limitations. One is that this permit would not follow a land transfer. So if we sold the property, that the permit would not go to the subsequent buyer. And then also, in terms of the traffic, we wanted to add a limit that would say that the business-related traffic would not exceed more than three daily visits by our staff. So we're trying to account for our one part-time assistant as well as the two interns. And then as well as the three daily visits by our staff, also no more than a monthly average of five business-related cars per week for the non-staff, that would be the patients.
Okay, thank you.
And we've, yeah.
Sorry.
This is Krista Nielsen. I have a question about, so the property is on a shared driveway, is that correct?
Yes, we're on a back lot with a shared driveway.
Have there been conversations with the other homeowners that share the driveway about your intention to be bringing traffic back to your house for this purpose?
Oh, yes, absolutely, we have.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners' questions? Okay, let's, Lynn, let's open it up to the public, please.
Okay, so I have two hands raised. Daniel Oliver, first?
Yes, hi. My name is Dan Oliver. My wife and Chris and I moved here in September with our three children. We are the house that, that's the other house in the shared driveway. And the other neighbors have asked us to speak in opposition to the, to the permit.
Mr. Oliver, your address, please?
713 Silver Mine.
Thank you. Please proceed.
And, and so we, we showed the, the driveway, the driver goes up and splits into two. We were on the left, they're, they're on the right. And And, uh, we have three children who play in the driveway occasionally, as, as the Birchelman children, and already there's traffic that goes up and occasionally makes a wrong turn into our house, which is to be expected, happens occasionally. Uh, and obviously we're very concerned about increased traffic density and increased, uh, wrong turns into our, um, into our, our area. And once you come into our house, you can't really turn around unless you go past our house up into our larger area to turn around. So it's, it's not easy to back up. So it really would be a major imposition. Uh, not just our house, but, uh, the, the shared driveway goes right past two other houses off Silver Mine Road. Uh, and, and both of those neighbors are very concerned about, uh, the noise, the loss of privacy, uh, the density. They have children as well and pets, uh, and so obviously the, the prospect of increased traffic is is very concerning. And, and they've also expressed to me that, uh, people already turn around in their driveway. In fact, the shared driveway is most, I think most are, is very narrow and people miss it, including my parents, for example. When they come to visit and they turn around someone else's driveway. Uh, and so I think the idea of having staff and patients hunting for this driveway back and forth, uh, our movers wound up, uh, behind us in the, in the forest, having gone up the, the wrong road, because actually, uh, uh, Google puts us a hundred feet off where we are. Uh, I think it would create chaos on, on Silver Mine Avenue. All these cars are hunting around for this, uh, shared driveway. Uh, and on top of that, the, the parking lots propellers are indeed in the woods. But there's another neighbor who tells us that, uh, that is in fact her front yard, or they look out onto that. So they will be greatly affected, uh, by that. So, I mean, I, I think the way we see it, the neighbors, that the Silver Mine area, which this is, is really not suitable for this kind of activity. It's a, it's a residential area. And increased traffic density would radically change the, it wouldn't affect the safety. Um, we also, uh, in terms of the permit, don't really understand the terms of it. It's, it's, it's for telemedicine operation, which by its nature doesn't see patients. Um, I, I don't think it objects to people working on their house if, if it's just them working there. Uh, but the idea of bringing in patients, uh, i- is a very different thing. And for this COVID testing, I think people, I mean, nine, six months ago, there's real need for that. Now I think there isn't. Uh, there's plenty of testing areas all over the place. And my understanding is that New Canaan itself has uh, said that there's no scarcity of testing anymore. So the need for, for patients to go get tested are are not, uh, no longer present. And I read that, that, uh, the permanent application says that there'd be one non-resident employee and tonight, for the first time, we discovered that there'd be in fact three. Uh, because we one plus, plus two interns. And so it would be quite a lot of, uh, density as well. So the permit, uh, as it's written anyway, doesn't, doesn't seem to address what the applicants are, are trying to do. Um, which, uh, again, as, as one of the commissioners pointed out, um, it, it's, the permit itself is for unlimited, uh, patients. Uh, and, but how are you going to police that? I mean, they, 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 you know, the idea of having five on average per week, uh, per month, I, I, it's hard for me to even figure out what that means. Uh, but to, to actually monitor that, I think would be, uh, im- impossible. There, there are lots of business districts, districts around that exists that, that I think would be very suitable for this kind of thing. But I don't think in a two-necker zoning in a back lot in Silver Mine is, is the best place for it. I understand there are other concerns about septic issues and wetlands and, and, and things of that nature, that the permits that you mentioned, uh, the commissioners mentioned, but I, I mean, hopefully we don't need to go there. Um, because, you know, the, the neighbors all, you know, universally think that this is just wholly inappropriate for this, this part of, of the neighborhood. So we're hoping the, the, uh, the commissioners, uh, reject the, the permit here. And, uh, and so no more time is spent on this, on this matter. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. I do have a question for you. Um, do I understand that you have retained an attorney and there's a request to keep this application open?
Uh, I, I, one of the other neighbors retained, retained attorney. I have not spoken with attorney myself, um, but I think the attorney uh, requested you put open to prevent it being approved tonight, uh, especially given the other issues that we don't know about. Like the parking, like the septic, like, like the wetlands. Uh, and so that was the basis of the request to keep it open. Uh, I think the neighbors' hope is that, uh, there's been no need to keep the application open if, if the commissioner is inclined to reject the permit, if, if you're inclined to accept it, that I think as you've already indicated, there's a lot more information that needs to be gathered and it would obviously be a longer discussion. But as I said before, we're hoping that that won't be necessary.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, Lynn, anyone else want to address this application to the public?
Um, yes, there are two more people. Um, the next one is Renee Rowan.
Hi, uh, this is actually Scott Rowan. I'm with my wife Renee Rowan. We're at seven two three Silver Mine. Uh, we just wanted to, uh, amplify the comments that were just made. Uh, we also have, uh, kids, uh, we are, this driveway that we're talking about runs right along our property line. So we have some significant concerns about what this is going to mean. Uh, again, I think all of these families have kids, uh, the, the Birchelman's themselves, I think, mentioned they've got seven kids. So there are a lot of kids in this area and the increased, uh, traffic just is really concerning uh, for us. Um, the question that was asked before about the attorney, we did retain an attorney. Uh, we don't want to use them. We don't want to move forward, but we do want to make sure this gets resolved. So if there are any questions on that, we're happy to address it. Uh, one other note, I, I appreciate the, the fact that they're trying to limit the number of, um, on, on average monthly visits. But it does seem from, from what we can tell there, uh, the Birchelman's are trying to build a business. Uh, at least from their filings online, um, I believe it's the mycatholicdoctor.com where they're raising hundreds of thousands of dollars to grow a practice. These may be unrelated, I'm not sure, but it, it just gives me pause for what other things might come over time, uh, if, if we open this up like this. So a- again, a lot, a lot of questions that give us some concern around our kids and our, and the safety of our family. Obviously having people that are sick coming into uh, uh, our driveway, uh, at a time like this is, is troubling for us. So, uh, we would also acknowledge that especially in a time like this where there's so much commercial real estate available, probably at better rates than ever, that we would really love to see that get filled, uh, in our town or surrounding town before we create new, uh, commercial space, uh, within the neighborhood. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Lynn, we have one more person, I believe, you said?
Yes, we do. Hold on one second. Um, Lucy Dayton.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Definitive question of two thousand twenty-one. Um, my name's Lucy Dayton. I'm a state representative. I represent New Canaan up in Hartford. And I am here tonight because I've had, uh, the Silver Mine Community Association reach out to me with concerns over this. Um, they indicated to me that the, um, the doctor has a, a small, um, I'm just reading it here, small, uh, minor home occupation permit, which allows her to see five patients a week. And, um, they're understanding that there are concerns about that this, um, major home occupation permit would allow the doctor to see up to twenty patients a day. Now, um, there can, they, they don't know if the uh, P and Z would have limitations on the, the number of patients or a number of uh, people coming in and out, um, as part of this application, if that would be contemplated as part of this. But their concern is also, I mean, if you do a Google search on, uh, seven eleven Silver, Silver Mine Road in New Canaan, you do find a, a business, um, located there. Um, and so that was a, another concern that they're already advertising for it. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, reach out to P and Z and, and, and ask those questions, um, on behalf of the Silver Mine Community Association. Thank you for your time and your work to, for New Canaan.
Thank you, and thank you for your input. Lynn, anybody else?
There's one more person. It is, um, Raj Mukherjee, and I apologize if I pronounced the name wrong.
Okay.
Yes, hi, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
And Lynn, my name is a difficult one, so no problem at all. Thanks for trying. Um, yeah, I, I felt compelled to speak to this, uh, this group. I just want to say thank you for what you're doing. Uh, we moved to New Canaan four years ago and we absolutely love it. It's, it's the perfect town for us. We're raising our kids here. And we plan to retire and, and, and live out our days here because this is, this is what we call home. Um, we love the Silver Mine area. It's a residential, um, place. We like to walk. All the Silver Mine Road can be pretty busy. Um, and so I just want to make sure I took a minute to join and also voice my opposition to this. Um, I appreciate the telehealth and I appreciate people trying to grow a business, but um, based on what I've seen, and by the way, we also share the driveway, so we are seven oh seven Silver Mine. So if you think about, um, that shared driveway with the Olivers, you've heard from the Rowans who are next door, uh, and then we're on the other side. So as you can imagine, um, some significant concerns about what we've heard here today. And, uh, we've already had a couple encounters. I'm not sure with whom, but in terms of some playing soccer, the soccer wall goes into the driveway. Um, our dog unfortunately, uh, jumped over into the driveway, daughter goes chasing after the dog, and then a car's coming uh, relatively quickly. I don't know whose car it was, but there's definitely concerns of ours in this residential area that we really enjoy and love to spend outside, especially now the weather's getting warmer, thank goodness. Um, and so I just wanted to make sure that I, 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 I know what you guys do here. I appreciate it so much. Um, I've been reading about the library. Uh, and I'm just, uh, excited and happy to express these concerns that I have because we've been very stressed about it, uh, my wife and I both. Um, it's really weighing on us because of these concerns that you've heard. And I think there's a removal of a garage door and it's going to then convert into something that seems significantly more commercial. So just worried about that for all the reasons you can imagine. So it's, it's safety, it's traffic, it's congestion. Uh, since our driveway is right next to that, sometimes people come up our driveway because that there are no signs and we'd appreciate if there wouldn't be any. Um, and you can't back out of our driveway very easily. So then you have to turn around at the top of our property. Um, so we have a lot of concerns, um, along those lines and, and would appreciate it and, and oppose and would like to close it here if we could.
Okay, thank you, sir. Lynn, anybody else?
Um, there's one more person that just raised their hand, um, Brendan and Deb Reedy.
Okay.
Hi there, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for, uh, taking your time to listen to us. I'm just, I'm another neighbor. I'm at six six five Silver Mine Road. And I agree with all of our other neighbors. So I just wanted to go on record by saying that. Um, I have nothing else to add to all of their comments. But my husband Brendan and I agree to everything that our neighbors have, um, already put out there. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Um, Lynn, is that it?
Yes, that is it.
Okay, um, Mr. Birchelman, um, any, any feedback to the public input?
Uh, no, I, I understand their concerns and I appreciate their, their time and willingness to speak. Um, we're just trying to find a way to, uh, allow my wife to see people in, in her home from time to time, you know, friends and family and people in a legal manner. So I appreciate your consideration of our application.
Okay, thank you.
This is Dr. Birchelman. I just want to say that, you know, it's been our intention from the very beginning to just be completely open and honest with our neighbors and neighborhood about what we're doing and, um, um, and, um, surprised by the response, um, and that, you know, that, um, this is the first, um, we've heard from many of these concerns from the neighborhood. Um, really, I'm just, it, it's really our, our intention to, um, and to, to work with the community. Um, and we hope that we're approachable. We've made ourselves very, very approachable in response to some of the comments, um. Um, we are a five oh one C three not-for-profit. My position is unpaid. We're not buil- building a huge organization um, in our home. Um, we are a, um, we're a small organization, but we, um, I do, I do work with people um, in many different areas in the United States. Um, there's very little locally that's happening present in New Canaan. And again, my duties are primarily administrative and volunteer. And I was, you know, trying to, I am trying to respond to the needs of, of our community, which, which were brought to me for the need for COVID testing, people seeking my services. In response to Mr. Rowan's comment about using other commercial space in New Canaan, we do not have the funding to, um, to, at this time, to, um, because this is an unpaid position. I take no payment for my clinical services. There isn't, um, there isn't funding to use a different commercial space in New Canaan. I wish I had that option.
Okay, thank you. Um, commissioners, my inclination is to keep this open. Um, the reasons are, is one is, um, I can't promise to close this and we deny it, which seems to be a neighbor's request. Um, so that's one reason to keep this open. Second reason to open would be Mr. Birchelman and Dr. Birchelman, perhaps you meet with the neighbors and, in the next few weeks and see if, um, you know, you can, can agree on any type of resolution. And then three is, as a couple of the commissioners pointed out, there's probably some additional homework you need to do anyway between now and the next hearing. Commissioners, you, are you okay with this approach? Okay, great. Okay, this hearing, this hearing is continued. Thank you. Okay, items three, four, and five, which will be heard together. Discussion and consideration of the request of Eduardo Hamlin, Robinson and Cole, authorization for the New Canaan Library owners, along with its affiliates. A property is located at one fifty-one Main Street, sixty-four Maple, forty forty, forty-four, forty-eight, fifty-six South to amend the zoning regs. Dated June sixteen, two thousand seven, uh, revised August sixteen, two thousand nineteen to add section five point one zero quasi-public library overlay zone. Number four, upon application, Eduardo Hamlin, Robinson, Cole, authorized agent for the New Canaan Library owners, along with its affiliates. A property is located at one fifty-one Main Street, sixty-four Maple, forty-four, forty-eight, fifty-six South for the site plan approval of, approval percent. Pursuant to section eight two A and a new section five ten G seven of proposed quasi-public library overlays on and a special permit pursuant to eight two B, four four D three, five four C four, six four G, six sixteen, proposed sections five ten C, D, five ten G three B, five ten G seven and eight. Um, of the proposed quasi-public overlay zone regulations. Item number five, discussion and consideration of the request of Eduardo Hamlin, Robinson, Cole, authorization for the New Canaan Library owners with its affiliates. A property is located at one fifty-one Main Street, sixty-four Maple, forty-four, forty-eight, fifty-six South. For petition for change in zoning boundary for properties currently in the business A and apartment zone. Um, before I ask the applicant to present, um, just a couple of comments at my end. Um, this is our fourth hearing on the New Canaan Library. Um, the first hearing was devoted to the presentation of the applicant. That was a number of hours. The second hearing was devoted to, uh, listening to the public. Um, and, uh, that was a number of hours. Um, hearing number three was a site visit, um, which, um, personally I found very valuable. And for, for those of you who are perhaps less familiar with how these major applications are evaluated by the commission, um, there's a process that we follow. And the process begins with the presentation of the applicant, question and answers. We give feedback to the applicant. We give the applicant tasks of things to do. The next stage is typically we listen to the public. And of course, that includes also reading the letters. Um, we listen to the public both for and against the application, but we also listen to the public in terms of recommendations and analysis. The next stage, which the site visit was really part of, and, and tonight, and is, I want to make the focus of is where the commission, while we're still in a public hearing mode, we're, we're getting down to do, doing additional work. So what we need to achieve and what we need to focus on tonight is what is the additional information and answers we need particularly from the applicant? Um, and then that's then, at some point either tonight or next month, you know, we then potentially close and then we go into an analysis and decision. But to re- repeat, the focus tonight is to get information and answers from the applicant. Um, we will open this to certain members of the public for new information. I do not intend to open this up broadly up to the public. We spent an entire evening doing that. As I said, we've also risked, listened to many, many letters. Um, so just to be clear, for us, it's a public hearing, but it's very much a working session. Um, that said, actually, before I do open it up to the applicant, I'm advised that we're going to take another shot at listening to public input that we were not able to listen to, and that was the students of the New Canaan High School. So I understand we're good to go with that? Lynn, you're on mute.
All right, yes, sorry. Yes, it is good to go. Hold on one second. I'm going to bring it up right now.
My two kids who went to New Canaan High School yelled at me for not making sure we listened to the New Canaan High School.
Wait, 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 wait. Oh, wait, hold on a second because I just saw it coming. Can you hear it now?
I can hear it. Now, now we don't. Lynn, can you turn it up?
Can you hear it now?
No.
Okay, so hold on a second, Tiger. Tiger, can you, um, can you make yours?
It's on mute. Yeah.
Can you make yours live?
Yeah. Can you see the screen?
We can.
Let's give it a shot.
Press play.
Try it. Can you hear it?
No. No, no sound coming through.
No sound?
Nope.
We don't hear anything, Tiger.
Yeah, I can hear him here. Sorry.
Tiger, can hear, maybe you could use your cell phone to uh handle the audio and then play that too, if that's possible. You call in twice.
Yeah.
I've done that before. It's a little awkward, but it can work.
Okay.
The syncing of the lips and the audio may be a bit off, but uh it's better than silence.
That's all right.
I very much would like to hear this.
I could hear it too, so. Shh, here.
Can hear it a little bit then, Tiger.
Just make sure you try it with somebody in the other room. Troubling with it, but.
We heard, we heard, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Uh, we heard a fair amount of it. Um, Lynn, maybe if you send it to all the commi- Commissioners, that would be great. And I'm willing to bet if we get it individually in our inboxes, we'll be able to listen to it as well.
Sure, we'll, we'll send that out.
Okay, great. Uh, okay. Uh, Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, uh, Chairman of the Members of the Commission, uh, my name is Brian Smith. I'm an attorney with Robinson and Cole. Uh, we represent the New Canaan Library and we thank you for uh listening to our presentation tonight. We're here to address uh the questions uh that have been posed by the commission uh and uh the Preservation Alliance, Keith Simpson and many members of the public at the meeting, public hearing session is held on March thirtieth, April fifteenth, and the site visit on April seventeenth. Uh, we have a PowerPoint presentation I'm going to ask Lynn to uh bring up, so we can sh- share the screen. And our intention is to try to go through quickly uh a, a number of the points that uh need to be addressed that you've looked for. Uh, and then uh, you know, with the, the group of, on the team for the library, and then we're ready to answer questions uh once we've made our presentation. So uh, if the PowerPoint is ready to be brought, I would appreciate it.
Sure, the, the PowerPoint is ready to be brought in. I just need to know. I just, sorry, um, the PowerPoint's ready to go in. I just need to know who else on your team, their phone numbers that need to come in because once I share, I can't, anyone else, I can't, I can't do the two tasks at the same time. Who, who are the other numbers that need to come in? What were the last four digits, the phone number?
The phone numbers? I don't. Uh, we.
Oh, seven, two, seven is the only phone, I believe.
Okay, so you should, that number should be in. And then, um, I think that's the rest of you. Okay, so I'm going to share right now. Thank you.
Eight, eight others.
Okay, so the, uh, so tonight, what we would like to present is uh the responses to the various uh questions posed by the commission and others. And, and we want to thank, at the outset, we want to thank not only the, uh, the commission members, but also the Preservation Alliance, Keith Simpson and members of the public who have uh provided comments, critiques, suggestions. And we have uh looked very carefully at all of these and uh we have actually accepted some. Uh, and uh, we will indicate where uh what we, and our response is still a desire based on all the input we've received to go ahead and to uh still create the new library building and to retain the library green, but we've made many other uh changes and we believe improvements to aspects of the application that you will see tonight. So the next slide, please. So this is just a very quick overview of how the properties uh came in to the library over time. So uh, if you go to, to the next slide, we've, the first one was nineteen thirteen, then the weed lot.
No.
I'm sorry. Uh, and then if you would just, next slide, please. You can see the Fazoli lot came in next, next slide. Then forty-four South. Keep going, next slide, please.
I'm about to present. Uh, I'm about to present, Mom. So.
You're not on mute, uh, Daniel. The uh, the uh, next is sixty-four, then fifty-six South. And then the, the last uh property that was uh obtained by the library was uh forty-eight South. Now, what, what I want to emphasize here is that these are all the properties that are currently owned by the New Canaan Library, Inc. Uh, and if the commission approves the application, uh, and in, endorses our request for the overlay zone and remaps it and then grants the special permit and site plan, uh, we intend to merge all these lots into one lot as a, as, and accept it as a condition of the special permit. Uh, now, next slide, please. Now, what, the first application that is before you, of course, is the Regulatory Text Amendment uh to create the new quasi-public library overlay zone uh and including the definitions. And so the, and that's section five, ten. And then we also have the zone change application to actually designate the site that I just showed you, which is located in the business A and apartment zone to be within the new quasi-public library overlay zone. So, next slide, please. The uh, so now there was public comments and Commissioner comments. Uh, and what we would like to address tonight is just a very quick overview. The commission should have the letter that I had submitted uh earlier, uh, as well as the memorandum by uh Daniel Robinson, who was our on-staff planner, uh, explaining that both the benefits of the overlay zone as presented and to address some of the legal points that have been raised. So first of all, the overlay zone is not spot zoning. Uh, is, this overlay zone uh does not in any way violate the uniformity clause that is a, in, under the Connecticut general statutes in that uh this overlay zone could be used elsewhere in the town of New Canaan should uh another library uh be created, a branch of, of the New Canaan Library or even another separate library uh and to you, to land it, and it's available in the zones as defined. Therefore, it's, it's something that can be of general utility, not limited to one piece of real property. And so the next question that had been raised by the commission was that, well, why do we need the overlay zone at all? Can't we simply use the uh business A zone and the apartment zone and, and make changes to those? And this was explored and in fact, in two thousand and eleven, uh, when the apartment zone did not even allow libraries, uh, there was a, a move to rezone the entire property to business A, which the commission at that time uh did not find appropriate and instead added library use to the apartment zone. However, that doesn't take into, into account all the many design changes and other things that would bring forward a library for the twenty-first century that we have added with the, with this provision, uh, which is why we believe that that to do it this way is less cumbersome and has less unintended consequences of having to change uh two zones uh in, in many different ways. Now, to further elucidate this, I would like to ask Daniel Robinson, uh, who's a, a professional planner who uh works with me at Robinson and Cole. Uh, when we brought him over before, his last position prior to this was a, is a, a, a planner in the town of Ridgefield. So Daniel, could you take over, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Can uh everybody?
We can hear you.
Okay, um, so uh Daniel Robinson, Robinson, Nicole, I wanted to speak just for about five minutes on, on overlay zones and their purpose and benefits uh in relation to the library's proposed quasi-public library overlay zone. And like Brian mentioned, I did submit a memo to the commission on this, um, and I'll just briefly summarize it now. Um, one thing, just to reiterate, uh, Brian just did mention that the comment about um the prior rezoning that did come up last time. That was in twenty-eleven and, and uh we did, we did research that more. Uh, you know, for a couple of basic reasons, we believe the overlay zone to be the better option. Um, as he mentioned, it, it can be used in other places around uh the community. Um, but you know, importantly though, it, the library provides an appropriate land use as a buffer or transition uh from the town's downtown urban center to the town's residential areas. And I think they, they did struggle with this last time. If the rezoning would expand the town's urban areas outward into a residential zoning district. And at the same time would then technically allow for a variety of other land uses to be permitted on the library site, uh, which may not be compatible with residential areas, including offices, medical uses, supermarkets, and even new car dealerships, which are all permitted in the business A zone currently. You know, this was not supported by a previous planning and zoning commission, and while times change, a rezoning such as this is no sure thing either. In my experience in land use, uh, you know, there would likely be just as much contentiousness into such a change as with the preservation of the nineteen thirteen library for, for a proposal that would newly permit land uses that are not typically compatible with residential living. So beyond the basic reasons, um, already identified, the overlay zone was chosen as the preferred path. As you know, overlay zones are a common regulatory tool that creates a special zoning district applied over one or more zoning districts, establishing additional or stricter standards and criteria for covered properties in addition to those of the underlying zoning district. As with traditional zoning uses that contribute to the health, safety, and welfare of a population are generally allowed to be regulated via, via overlay zoning. That the library contributes to the health and welfare of the New Canaan's population is clear. Uh, it's even stated in the town's uh P O C D, while the library is not a town-owned facility, it also contributes to the overall quality of life in the community. In addition to its traditional role, the New Canaan Library also hosts many other activities that contribute to lifelong learning, cultural enrichment, and information exchange. So that's in the P O C D. Uh, common overlay districts involve areas around public water wells, floodplains, or coastal hazards. And as you're aware, the town of New Canaan currently has three overlay zones. Floodplain, aquifer protection, and pedestrian-oriented family, uh multifamily zone. As with this last overlay zone, uh, in the town, communities often use overlay zones to promote specific development projects or types of projects such as mixed-use or water develop, uh dependent developments. Uh, overlay zones are used in these cases to ensure, among other things, design and land use consistency over a specific area or region that may span multiple zoning districts, as is the case here. The proposed quasi-public library overlay zone is a type of community design and tradition, transitional overlay zone, the intention of which is to supplement existing zoning based on a vision relating to the design form and character of a particular place. I think you skipped a, a head of my slide, the map, but that's uh basically showing the village district design area. That's come up in terms of these uh village district design guidelines, which have been talked about a lot recently as well. The business A zone portion of the site, uh, the northern portion in red is part of the village district and is currently beholden to its design guidelines. The village district design guidance in section six point twelve of the regs, while the apartment zone, which makes up most of the library site, is not in fact, part of the village district. Um, and so with that, because the library spans two zoning districts, each with their own lot and dimensional standards, and one that is within the village district and one that is not, and to ensure consistency of design and form across the two zoning districts and the entirety of the site, the overlay zone text language specifically proposes is its own design guidelines as well as, as well as lot and dimensional development standards to address the library's unique spatial needs and desires. Finally, you know, besides ensuring consistency of design and form through tailored standards, the overlay zone here provides other benefits not found in or more stringent than the underlying zoning. or more stringent than the underlying zoning districts, nor the village district design guidelines. For example, the project's site infrastructure standards, including for passive solar heating to reduce energy consumption and electric and water conservation standards are more stringent than the performance standards in the existing zoning regulations. In addition, the project's parking-related standards allow for the library's parking requirements to be met in nearby parking facilities to reduce the overbuilding of parking facilities in the town and their associated visual and environmental impacts. The overlay zone's unique landscaping standards also combine to produce an open space area with enhanced buffers and the provision of shade trees, resulting in an improved transitional area between the downtown urban commercial area and the adjacent residential areas. However, it is important to note finally that because this site is so important to the town and the community, the proposed text language requires that a special permit be required for any library redevelopment, which is a highly discretionary review and approval process requiring a public hearing. Thus, while the development standards of the underlying zoning districts and partially applicable village district design guidelines are supplanted by the proposed overlay zone standards, required review and discretion by the town ensures that any proposed project, such as the proposed library project, receives the highest level of community review to facilitate a type of amenity that the community desires. And that is where we are today. And with that, I trust this has helped move us forward. I am also available along with the rest of the team for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're, we're going to ask Lisa Oldham to address the commission.
Next slide, please. And next slide. Right, I'm going to, I'm Lisa Oldham, Executive Director of New Canaan Library. First, I'm going to speak to a few slides that address some of the questions we've had about honoring the memory of the existing library. Next slide. The New Canaan Library will honor the memory of the existing library through and commemorate the structure in a variety of ways. Library will commission professional photographs of the existing building and will undertake to produce a limited edition commemorative book commemorating the library's one hundred forty-four-year history with abundant photographs and other graphics. This will be a permanent feature of our collection and will also be offered for sale to the general public. Photographs will also be used in future displays within the library and elsewhere. Next slide, please. The library will work with a community-based committee to select works of art representing the current library. Through a well-planned process, we will invite local artists to represent through original artwork the features of the current library, which have been most striking or meaningful to them from the original building and its additions to what has taken place inside. Final selections will form a permanent gym that will be on display in the new New Canaan Library, honoring the previous structure in our library's ever-unfolding learning community. Next slide, please. There are two paintings currently located in the salon room, which will be returned to their original owner, the New Canaan Historical Society and Museum. Next slide, please. The repurposing of materials. Unless the original building or its facade is moved to a new location, the New Canaan Library intends to repurpose the granite stones from the original facade and the perimeter wall at Cherry Street and elsewhere on the site. An interpretive plaque will be installed that both informs and preserves the memory of the original building. These are some of the ways that we intend to honor the existing building as we move forward into the future. Next slide, please. Another question that we've been asked is to talk some more about how the library green will work in the, in, when the new facility is built. Next slide, please. Over thousands of years, libraries have continuously evolved to meet the needs of the communities they serve. The New Canaan Library mission is to inspire lifelong learning through innovation and discovery and to be the information and cultural center of the community. The library green will be a real community commons. It is an outdoor room that provides the library exciting new ways to achieve on its mission. Like the indoor spaces at the new library, the green will allow members and others the freedom to enjoy readings in the outside fresh air. Fully Wi-Fi connected, our members will enjoy sitting on the terrace or on the lawn to work and study outdoors. But this is only the beginning. Learning together through experiences carefully designed by our team of library professionals has seen an eighty percent increase in participation and is the fastest-growing area of the library service. New indoor spaces in the library are designed to ensure that the community's appetite for learning will be saved through myriad active learning channels for all ages. The green presents expansive new opportunities to increase active, the active learning that is so favored by our community. The first of these is formal programming. New Canaan Library provides a rich and diverse range of formal learning and cultural appreciation programs. The green provides exciting new opportunities for mission-driven, for our mission-driven and entrepreneurial team to develop and deliver enriching outdoor experiences that will delight our members, young and old. These will include a wide range of programs varying in scale and content. Outdoor performance during the warmer months will include music, family-focused performances, and annual events such as the teddy bear picnic, pumpkin fest, animal encounters, and more. Structured learning will include plein air painting classes, Tai Chi, citizen science projects, outdoor films, and other events. Our younger learners will enjoy the opportunity to continue their steam learning outside with family astronomy evenings, rocketry competitions, physics, science learning, and more. Additionally, New Canaan Library is engaged in fundraising to the tune of eight hundred thousand dollars each year to support the collections, programs, and services our community so enjoys. These funds are raised through both direct mail and events. Today, all of our fundraising events happen in hired facilities such as local country clubs, the cost of which reduces net income. Our stewardship and long-term fundraising goals will be enhanced by the new building, terrace, and green. In fine weather, the auditorium's glass north wall will open directly onto the terrace and green, where day or evening events or receptions may be held. This activity is essential to the economic future of the library as it works to provide a significant portion of its annual operating costs. The library must grow its philanthropic base through successful event-driven activities. And the new terrace and green provide wonderful new space where the library can hold new fundraising outside and in tandem with the auditorium. Passive, non-programmed use of the green will encourage both locals and visitors to stay downtown, patronize local businesses, and contribute to our local economy. The large terrace with patio table seating is inviting and provides alternative to bookable indoor rooms. P T C parent committees with small children in tow may prefer to meet outside to tackle their committee work. Terrace and green will provide pleasant informal space for small groups or families to meet with their children, to meet with their children after a library visit or before an afternoon school run. Tweens and teens will enjoy outdoor space after school before meeting with their tutor inside the library. The green is rich with possibility for community collaborations such as outdoor art installations, community-building events with our partners, and much more. Of course, simply reading a book on the green will be the most wonderful experience for all. The library has a flourishing history of collaboration throughout the community, and the green provides ample space for the library and its community partners to provide more opportunities for community gathering and community building. Outdoor programs with existing and potential partners, not limited to, and would include outdoor nature-focused learning programs with pollinator pathway partners such as the Land Trust, the Nature Center, Planet New Canaan, Bristow Bird Sanctuary, garden clubs, and others. Food Revolution, theater events such as our previous partnerships with the Summer Theater, community suppers, and much more. Lastly, the green adds to the library as a community anchor. As an anchor institution, the library and its green will make an enormous contribution to community well-being and will provide economic stimulus to the local economy, both indirectly by attracting resident, non-resident visitors into the central business district as well as directly by collaborating with partners like the Chamber of Commerce, T D A, and others, to extend the perimeter of local events such as sidewalk sale, holiday stroll, October for Design, et cetera, providing a geographic anchor as well. The library green will provide an exceptional venue for the collaborative community events that make New Canaan the very special place it is. And now hand the slides over to Lynn Temple.
So this is Brian Smith. Is Lynn Avney? Is Lynn Temple unmuted?
Hold on, hold on one second. I'm going to see, hold on one second. Oh, sorry. Pardon me, I left him in the attendee room, so I'm gonna.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, yes. Hi, my name is Lynn Temple, the other Lynn. And I'm with Turner Construction Company. I've been with Turner for thirty-five years, most of my career in pre-construction. And I was asked by the building committee to take a look at the saving or the reuse potentially of the nineteen thirteen library as well as the nineteen thirty-six addition to it. And I provided some information to you. I think the next slide shows a comparison of the Architectural Preservation Studio estimate as well as Darm's estimate, Darm's estimate as well as my independent estimate, and I apologize to you all. I think it's probably difficult to read, but I think you all had received it in advance. So I'm just going to hit some of the highlights that, that I found when I looked through the other information and kind of prepared my own independent estimate. And really, the, the majority of it comes to an old building like this, which is in, is in relatively good shape in many ways. The struggle is trying to put new things inside of old spaces, and many of you, if you have an old home where you have an old building that you've been involved in, these are some of the biggest challenges, in particular new code-driven M E Ps, for example, H V A C systems, electrical systems. All those require a more extensive level of renovation than, than what I can tell was looking like maybe was anticipated in the original estimate. And so we've done a number of these kind of projects at Yale University. We're working our project up at Choate right now, at Choate School. And even some of the healthcare jobs we've done that have some of their older facilities. Oftentimes, there's abatement requirements as well as, as I said, M E P requirements. And when you go to reinvigorate the building, many times those systems are not sufficient. And so the work that you need to do in these buildings to bring them up to code and to bring them into some sort of usable state is significant. I also noticed that some of what I would call the below-the-line construction costs, which are typical in our industry, were missing from the Architectural Preservation Studio estimate, and that's kind of highlighted there. So, for example, certainly the direct work cost, what we would consider the trade cost were represented, but things like insurance and, and construction contingency, any bonding or fee, or even the professional staff that would be required to run the job, those things were all, would be normally would be part of it. And so some of those seem to be a little light, and they're also volume-driven. So as you miss things that are like the M E P systems, for example, those things are also, as a percentage, you know, are far, far less than they probably should be. So I'm somewhere in between. Actually, I think the, the Architectural Preservation Studio plan was in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars. The Darm estimate was just under three million dollars, and I was more in the, the two-seven range. Actually, two-three in comparison to seven with some of the additional scope. And, and when you look at a building like this to selectively demo it, if you ask the demolition contractor to come in and selectively do demo versus, you know, knock it down and take it away, normally we would expect to see premiums for that, and that's some of the other costs that we've, that we've listed there. So that's kind of my overview in terms of costs, and, and I'm certainly open to questions about it. The next slide, if you could, actually shows an overview of the site plan against, I'm sure most of you are familiar with it. The blue represents a lot of the, the wall that's in really good, relatively good shape. A fair amount of the red wall that's behind it, it would appear from the inside anyway that some of those areas have been modified and are opened up, and that would require us to make sure that obviously, when we do take the balance of the building down, which would be, in this case, I'll say plan north for simplicity up in the lawn area there. As the rest of that comes down, we need to make sure that the structure is sound enough that it doesn't come down on its own. And certainly, a demolition contractor, again, would want to be concerned about something like that and to make sure that there's proper engineering done to support it. So those are some of the overviews, and there is a portions of that wall that I'm sure are in good shape. And again, it's, it's, again, it's, it's a renovation, so exposing some of these things and really getting a chance to look at it as you start to do the demo will bring clarity to a lot of it. The next slide, if you would, really does highlight the, the first floor level and some of the areas where we know that there are openings that have been created in the original exterior facade. And again, you can see it in the forefront, and the blue is the nineteen thirteen, and obviously in the back for reference is the nineteen thirty-six. And then on the basement level, I think it's interesting to look at, which will be the next slide. There's a fair amount of crawl space that actually, if you could flip next one. The next one shows there is a portion of the basement that would remain, and you can see there's a couple openings. Again, you know, heading to the corridor and to some of the later additions. From a foundation perspective, obviously, that would have to be infilled as well and make sure that it's watertight. I know there was some references to some water issues down there. When I saw some of the, the write-ups and narratives that had occurred, it seems like they may be minimal. But again, we, we need to make sure that infills of the foundation are done. The crawl spaces, again, what I'll say, plan right to the red area. In my experience, some of those areas often have had piping in them for perimeter heating systems back in the day. And oftentimes, some of the asbestos pipe coverings would fall off into the dirt. And I know at Yale University and at a couple of the healthcare hospitals, some of that dirt had to be remediated as well. So again, you know, there's a lot of unknowns with a building like this, but we tried to do an independent cost look at it in our best effort based on what we could see and what we knew about the buildings. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris to talk a little bit about some of the sidewalk crossings and some of the parking issues. Chris, are you there?
So Chris Cardney would be the next, Lynn.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I guess next slide. Okay, what this shows, what we'll start with is the crosswalk. And where we left off in the presentation was a, a crosswalk from Center School Lot north to the library. And since that time, we've met with the town, we've met with the police commission, and we've proposed some enhancements to that crosswalk. First is both a material change and a color change. Although we're, I think, still working that out with the town, we're open to the type of material and the type of color. But if you are familiar with the Elm Street crossings further north, something similar to that, which is a stamped concrete. As we move to, well, if we stay in the crosswalk, what we're also proposing is a, is a, some, some signage within the crosswalk similar to Maple and Main. You have a yield pedestrian sign, so we're showing one there. As we move to the south, what we're proposing is to relocate the ADA spaces. Right now, they're on the drive aisle, and we're proposing to move those to the east. As we're doing that, we would upgrade the signage and striping. Today, there's four spaces striped. I think there's six spots, but they're not to the latest standards. So these spaces would be signed and striped to the latest standards and, and six spaces based on the number in Center School Lot. We're also proposing a sidewalk connection from those spaces to the crosswalk. And those will not only provide access from the ADA spaces, but they'll provide a conduit where anyone parking in the lot could use to come up through the striped spaces up through the sidewalk. If we go to the north side of the crosswalk, we've revised the paving pattern to be the town standard concrete sidewalk within the right-of-way. And we've added a few bike racks at this location. Those are shown to the right of the crosswalk. As we move left to the west and the drop off, this is going to be a flush condition. We've added some striping and no parking signage. So this will this will be compliant for ADA as well for those being dropped off or picked up. Next slide, please. And if we look at the the entrance off the south, we've added four ADA spaces back there. The accessible route would work its way to the east and around to the main entrance of the building. We've also added a few bike racks there, I think about eight. My next slide, please. And in working with the town's traffic consultant, we've been going back and forth on the analysis and providing information that's been requested. One of the suggestions that came up was to alleviate some of the Maple Street queuing to look at the entrance of Center School Lot off of South Avenue. Today, it's just a one-way in, and the suggestion was to make it two-way. So people that are trying to get to south, making a left on Maple, will be able to do so directly. That would also alleviate the queuing in Maple Street. So we've we've updated the analysis to show that it's under review currently by the town's consultant. And next slide. We also got some feedback from the town engineer on that connection, who suggested maybe we look at coming at more of a 90 degree instead of the angle that it is today. So we've looked at a sketch to do that. We lose three spaces but gain three spaces back, so net zero. And we'll continue to work with the town on this alignment as well. There's a few trees that would be nice to work around, but we'll see if we can do that. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mark Herter of Centerbrook.
Great, thanks, Chris. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Mark Herter, Centerbrook Architects. So if you go to the next slide, I'm gonna ask, so in the interest of time and of the comments at the beginning, I know you know your plan of conservation and development well, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna review any of this. We've, I've articulated the POCD points that we are consistent with in this plan. And I know that's articulated well in the in the submission package. So I'm gonna ask you to go to slide 45. And we'd like to talk about the outdoor rooms and the landscape features of our plan. There were a lot of questions raised and comments about about the plan in the April 15 presentation. And so we thought it was important to talk about the outdoor rooms and the landscape features tonight. And so before I do that, I just want to make it clear that it's really, as Lisa articulated, it's really just isn't just about grass and plants, but it's really about program. And that's why we call it outdoor rooms and landscape features. It's really about lifestyle, about an extension of the library and a connection to downtown, a place where people can go for events, for relaxation, for reading, and for lifelong learning and understanding of sustainability. And many people called in on the 15th and spoke clearly, eloquently, and passionately about how this will enhance their lives and their connection to the library. So these plans are a result of years of input and years of refinement with the library, with the board, and over 1,000 people that have weighed in on this plan. So I think it's important that we spend a few minutes tonight talking about these features. We see that there are seven features on the site. The first is the events terrace. The second, children's garden. Third, the events lawn. The fourth, the infiltration basin to the north. The fifth, the pedestrian enhancement along Cherry Street. Sixth, Main Street landscaping. And then seventh, the service area. So if you go to the next slide, I'll turn it over in a moment to Sarah Lawrence from Landscape Architect. But before I do that, I just want to talk about for a moment about the alternate plan that was submitted for the presentation on the 15th. You go to the next slide. So this plan, I've overlaid our proposed event lawn on this plan to show how is it is articulated on the site. As a space, it's bound on the north by the infiltration basin, on the south by the events terrace. And then on the east and west by the paths, it is about 1,306 13,670 square feet. Its shape, what's important about this as an outdoor room for events or for general use is its shape and its layout. And so it's a gentle slope south to north, great for effectively an amphitheater for viewing, but also as a gentle slope, really good for use. You know, to go out and read a book, have a picnic, or do any of the many events that Lisa talked about earlier. And so I want to, I talk about this because I really want to compare it, if you go to the next slide, to the lawn proposed. So if you look at this space and you think about it as a comparative events lawn, and we think about this as an outdoor room, the proportions of this depth to width are not really great for for event, for people for viewing of events. The the people on the north along Cherry Street and the people on the south along the parking have really oblique views to the stage, which is off the back of the library. In addition to that, the site slopes from south to north. So those sitting along Cherry, not only are they sitting along the street, which, you know, they said they did not want to do, but they have a difficult viewing angle, and they're below the stage, which is finished floor of the building. On the south side, they're sitting next to parking and equally difficult viewing angles. The other thing is the parking and the drive to the parking bisects the site. So dangerous for those that are going from one side to the other. And more challenging for the layout of the site in general. So it's important that we point these out because we think about, when we think about outdoor rooms and spaces and the characteristics of their use, we really have to do an apples-to-apples comparison. So if you go to the next slide, the next one, I am going to turn it over to Sarah Lawrence, Landscape Architect, to talk about the the spaces, the outdoor rooms, and the landscape features. Sarah.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. Can everyone hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mark. And please feel free to pop in if you have anything to add to what I'm saying. I'm gonna start by talking about the terrace just north of the building. And Lynn, if you want to go to the next slide. So this terrace really is an extension of the interior of the building with a lot of different seating areas and seating arrangements and capacity for different types of events on this terrace. It's the lower portion that is currently showing a number of movable tables and chairs is sized for an event tent that could be 25 to 75 feet wide and allow for a lot of different flexibility with different weather conditions. If it does happen to rain, the entire terrace is designed to sheet flow water into this central garden. That's really at the heart of the terrace and provides sort of center beautiful garden for anyone that's visiting and and sitting on the terrace. This water that will be running into this garden really will be, it's a very passive system and really is irrigating this garden and percolating through both recharging the groundwater and also limiting the amount of stormwater drainage that's added to the New Canaan stormwater system, which can, you know, often, you know, towns have a lot more stormwater than the system can handle. So the garden itself is planted with a variety of native plants as well as a few non-native plants, but iris, grasses, paper bark birch, lines of winter berry. And and the north part of the garden, there's a edging of evergreen, a low evergreen shrub. And on the south side, there's also a more formal edging of a boxwood shrub along the the south side of the garden. And where you see that sort of blue rectangle at the lowest portion of the basin, that's really a riverstone, a rectangle of stainless steel with riverstone in the basin. And we think we're hoping that during very large or larger rain events that this space will be activated by a little bit of water and before it percolates into the system. And you could actually see water as you're crossing the black locust boardwalk that you see crossing that garden. You can go to the next slide. This is an example of a similar sort of system at Williams College in Massachusetts, where this stormwater runs along the whole entire length of a a large green that we designed. And we have a similar sort of boardwalk over a riverstone basin with grasses, shrubs, flowering trees and flowering shrubs. And it's a really lively and beautiful place to visit as well as, you know, there's a lot of pedestrian activity that crosses it every day. Next slide. I'm going to talk now about the children's garden, which also is a real extension of the children's library inside the building. This, the spaces have been designed for various opportunities of outdoor teaching for large and small reading groups as well as outdoor classrooms. And while we were designing it, we really wanted a space that would immerse the children in nature. And you can see there's, you know, paths sort of weaving through these planted forms, allowing the kids to get up close with planting and the smells and textures and really examine plant material, all the all of which have been selected for form and texture and really enhancing and heightening the experience as well as seasonal variation. So that each time, you know, families come to visit this garden, they're, you know, seeing new, new plants and new or new expressions of the plant material that's in the garden. In addition to that, the material choices that we've made have are all sort of natural materials, including black locust steppers and these huge big white oak slabs for benches as well as boulders that are strategically placed within the garden. Next slide. So this is a section through the children's garden that's on the south side of the building and runs across this section cuts through Maple Street. And the section is really showing the arrangement of the walls on that south edge as well as running north along South Avenue. And it really, I think, highlights how the walls create an enclosed space for the garden, both from a safety perspective, but also really creating this in the secret garden experience that we were hoping that the children would have when they, you know, come out of the building and they're faced with all of this plant material. Next slide. And here's a section cut along on the west side of the building through the children's garden to South Avenue. Sorry for the incorrect street name there. But that stone wall continues as a black locust fence, four feet high and returns to the building completing this enclosed space and really keeping the children into in the garden with their families. Next slide. And so I know that a lot has been already talked about the events lawn, but I wanted to back up a little bit, just talking about the sort of design. You know, sort of our our design process and thinking about the the lawn and its relationship to the building, which really is the a new, real important civic building for New Canaan and a meeting place for the community. And the the lawn itself really needs to be an extension of that. And that energy really, we thought, needed to extend out and be scaled appropriately for the community to meet or gather and really come together. And it's not unlike this sort of historic sort of town green or town common that you often see all over New England. And we think we we have scaled it correctly for a lot of this type of civic landscape. In addition, the two paths on either side of the lawn are both ADA accessible, bringing visitors to the library. And the curved path to the west provides a it actually provides a mid-block pedestrian connection to the library, which is one of the things that's highlighted in the POCD. Next slide. And I know that this slide has been discussed before, but I just wanted to quickly touch on the fact that the lower portion of the lawn is a is a pretty large expanse of a 2% slope. So large enough for a, you know, almost flat space for the tent and stage and for that area to really be usable in that way. Next slide. And while kind of bigger picture, thinking about how we were looking at designing this landscape in a holistic way and really trying to fit all of these pieces together, it really was a balance of trying to balance the openness and sort of separation of spaces. And so the event lawn really has become this sort of open outdoor room with the landscape along Main Street becoming its sort of windows into and connect connective landscape to Cherry Street and also Main Street. And the planting along that hillside on Main Street has been very carefully chosen to be a layer of lower shrubs that won't block views from inside of the at the terrace or the lawn, looking to Main Street, looking towards the parade or or other activities that are happening outside of the the library landscape. But then also canopy trees that are limbed up, you know, not blocking views to the building and to the event lawn from the outside or looking out. Next slide. This garden space, really, what we're calling it, is predominantly native species and is definitely going to be a contributor to any kind of pollinator landscape and pollinator corridor in New Canaan. Pollinator pathway. Next slide. And so now talking more about the infiltration basin on the north edge of the site. You know, as landscape architects, we really believe that creating visible solutions to mitigating stormwater is incredibly important, especially on public projects where you know, educating the public on the benefits of these systems that benefits of these systems that both help people understand the impacts of our built environment on the larger environment and also the benefits of recharging groundwater, especially in areas with a lot of well uses, usage and lessening and slowing the impact on the the urban stormwater system. This, this basin, this infiltration basin is really, it is infrastructure, but it's also a garden. And the species that we've, you know, provided to live in this basin are both, can both survive in wet and dry conditions. We've done a lot of research and had a lot of experience in basins very similar to this and are very confident that the species that have been included are appropriate for this type of use. And in addition, the, the diversity in this garden is very high and will also attract a very diverse population of birds and pollinators. And you can see here on the south edge of the basin, there's a, there's actually an eight foot wide edge of an evergreen shrub, which really creates a sort of buffer for the pedestrian walking along the edge of the stormwater garden. Next slide. This is a section through, through the infiltration basin. And I wanted to show this to show the different layers of planting soil first in the basin, which you know, at the very base of it, there's a six inch layer of sand and gravel as well as an underdrain that runs along the, the length of the lowest portion of the basin. And in, you know, at times of very unusual rain, the water will go into a catch basin and and, you know, go into the, the town stormwater. But in a normal, normal rain events, the water will percolate, recharge the groundwater and the system really is designed so that the the system completely drains within 72 hours, definitely eliminating the possibility of mosquito growth. Next slide. So I'm just going to run through a couple of images of some stormwater gardens that we have experienced building. This is a stormwater garden in Pulaski Park in North Hampton, North Hampton, Mass. And it's quite, it's a different shape. It's probably a similar square footage, though it's long, very long and linear and runs the length of the site. But I wanted to show this slide because of the, this is a very well-used park and pedestrian activity is around the stormwater garden at all times. And if you go to the next slide, this planting is actually done in the first year of this stormwater garden. And you can see that the, the planting is already lush and it takes up the water very quickly. And you can see a little bit of the water. You can see that it had just rained. It was a, it was quite a hard rain that day. And you can see the, the wetness on the deck there. Next slide. This slide is, is actually from one of my favorite projects that we've done. It's in, at the Florence Griswold Museum in Old Lime, Connecticut. And I, I encourage anyone who's interested to go visit this, this landscape. It's, this basin is more similar to the scale of the basin that, that we're providing at the library. Both in it, both cleanses, captures and cleanses both runoff, surface runoff from the surrounding landscape, but also from a future proposed parking lot, the water is, is piped into this garden. It's cleansed, it's as much as possible is recharged into the groundwater and then and cleansed before it can reach the Lieutenant River just on the right of this photograph. Next slide. And I'll just run through this very quickly. This is a very engineered project, the Harvard, the, sorry, the Harvard Science and Engineering Complex, which is a series of infiltration basins that some of which are unstructured and then others that are very similar to the stormwater, the more traditional stormwater garden that we're showing. Next slide. This is a drawing of one of the basins and you can just go to the next slide. I wanted to show this photo because this is within, I think, four months of the initial planting of this basin, which has a similar capacity to our basin. It's, it's designed to hold water in large events. And you can see that the water, there's no standing water that the planting is, is sort of rushing to establish itself. And this is, you know, a very quick turnaround. And we, you know, we, this is project's still in construction, but so we have a ways to go, but we're, we're very pleased with the the progress that we see in these initial photographs. Next slide. So now I'm going to talk a little bit more about the Cherry Street pedestrian corridor. That's the name that we've been talking, saying about it. But we really tried to follow guidelines included in the complete streets literature. And wanted, you know, knowing that the, that the existence of this new library building and this new project was, is going to attract more pedestrian activity to Cherry Street and felt like that experience really needed to be healthier, safer, more enjoyable for any pedestrian that's coming to the library and walking along Cherry Street. You can go to the next slide. And we actually pulled the, the wall that is along Cherry Street. We actually pulled it back from the, from the street edge by 10 feet so that we could nestle this seating into planting so that, you know, we can have this, this double line of, of trees, one of autumnal cherries, which will flower in both the spring and the autumn as shade over the seating. And then also still being able to pull the sidewalk, the pedestrian portion of the sidewalk further in and allowing for a four-foot buffer of, you know, very tolerant ground covers and, and street trees. Next slide. This is a slide just quickly showing a pedestrian corridor right along the stormwater garden. Next slide. And here's a very similar condition to our site right along Main Street in North Hampton where we have facing benches with planting. And it really activates the edge of this, this park, this Pulaski Park. It's, it's a very vibrant edge and sort of perfect entryway into the park. Next slide. This is a view at night showing the benches as well, as well as similar bike parking as we're showing. Next slide. And just how seating can really activate a space really. Next slide. And so then with the service area, finally, we have designed the service yard really to function properly for fire and then also for picking and picking up garbage. We are showing a dumpster enclosure that's solid on three sides with doors to, towards the center of the service yard as well as bike parking. But we also envision the spaces being perfect for sort of temporary support for larger lawn events with, you know, the porta potties could be up here. Any number of other sort of support, I don't know, utilities, I guess, that, that the larger events may need. And in addition, we've really started to think of the service yard as also being another event space, really something that's maybe a little less formal than the terrace. It's the, that's just outside of the building. And, you know, there could be food trucks that come there and more table, you know, temporary tables and chairs set up. And it could be a really another type of event and just sort of being able to offer more varied events for the community in this space. And you can go to the next slide. Here is a, an event in a similar scaled space with people dancing. And you can see how many people are spilling out into the larger landscape. Next slide. And here's just to show how seating and different seating arrangements. This is a, this is really these sort of beer garden tables set just alongside a large green. But it really gets activated just by having the tables there and allows people to use the space in a variety of ways and allow the community to, to activate spaces. Okay.
So we're going to turn it over to Ty Tregalos to talk about site logistics.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Trust you can hear me? Can you?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good. If you go to the next slide, please. So we, we were in the, the pre-construction phase of the project. And that is essentially our planning phase. Needless to say, Lynn and his team do a lot of estimating, analyzing the drawings and we, we look at constructability of the certain technical aspects of, of the project. But another big part of what we do in pre-construction is a logistical analysis of the site and really develop a plan on, on how we're going to build the project. And also, more importantly, how we're going to interact with the community in and around our building project. So if we go to the next slide, please. The previous slide was obviously just the existing conditions. So we've developed this, this plan. This is somewhat of a simplification. We have sort of multiple other drawings that get into some other details, but I'll use this really as a, as the tool going forward. And really walking you through from the south to the north. You've got the existing Center School parking lot, which for the purposes of this project, we're going to use the northwest corner, which is outlined with a, a, a blue enclosure as really our staging area for our construction trailer and some of the subcontractor trailers for, for storing materials and some equipment. The, the site itself is actually quite constrained. There's not a lot of room specifically on the building site for staging. So that's why we need to create some space adjacent to it for that purpose. So that we will be enclosing that area with a construction fence with gates. And we anticipate that, you know, vehicles will, will be coming up South Avenue and, and entering either from the, the south end or from, from Maple Street, depending on, on their, their approach to the, to the project. Some vehicles will be traveling back and forth from the site to this staging area. But typically what subcontractors will store in the trailers are things like copper pipe, electrical components, some plumbing components, things where they, where they have a lot of supply and we don't have necessarily, we don't want to store them in the building or because of their, their value, we need to lock them up at night. So there will be some traffic, but not, most of the traffic will be directly into the site from, from Maple Street. So traveling, well, also the, the patrons of the library will be parking in Center Street Lot, the existing library. And as Chris identified, there'll be a new sidewalk that will get you to Maple Street. And then the red dotted line, I think, is my cursor. Can you see my cursor? Yes. Okay. I see your head's nodding. So this line here will be the primary pedestrian flow from Maple Street to the east. And although we showed this crosswalk, I think really we'll probably blacken out that crosswalk and encourage people to go all the way to the corner. Because there's, there's, we could be doing some work, removing this retaining wall here. And I think we want to keep pedestrians as far away from this activity as possible. The other option is to go to the west and proceed up South Avenue and circumvent the construction site and enter from the driveway and into the existing main entrance. Whereas these folks will enter from Main Street into the lower level entrance. As far as the construction site itself, the, the primary access for deliveries will be off of Maple Street. Again, there's not a lot of room to turn trucks around. So essentially we will have an in and an out for, for trucks dropping off materials. And given the limited space, this will be obviously carefully scheduled. And for certain events such as a concrete pour, we will obviously coordinate the stacking of, of concrete trucks in an appropriate spot. Probably using some of the, the Center School a lot for that purpose. Usually there's three or four trucks backed up at one time to, for a larger concrete pour. Then obviously the, the construction site itself will be enclosed with a construction fence. And our concern is to contain our operations within that fence and also obviously isolate ourselves from the activities of the library. They're really two, two primary concerns during construction. One is the safety of our people doing the construction. But also, and more important is, is the safety of the people around us. So to that extent, we, we have to look at the existing library and understand some of their operational needs. And we've met with the, the fire marshal and talked about an egress plan from the existing library. Right now there are three egress doors that handle the lower level from the lam room and also two exit doors from this wing of, of the, the library that exit out to the south. And there's really no way to go east from there, but given the, the grade change. So all those folks will be directed to the west, will maintain a pathway outside of our construction fence, but then will go north to the area of the, the main entrance and then off to the, the public way, if you will. And along with that, given the proximity, we will have to do some soil retention to, to because our, our deeper foundation is in this area to preserve and, and protect the, the patio there that will provide that means of egress. So the activity on Maple Street, that, as I mentioned, is our, really our primary access and egress from the site. It is the, the quietest street of the, of the surrounding streets. There are times when we will have to shut down Maple Street. I'm anticipating for some of the steel erection. Again, we don't have room for a crane and the steel delivery trucks. So we'll probably, we will park the crane inside the site and then offload the trucks from Maple Street. And we will coordinate with the, with the police department and the town for those, those dates. Other than that, there will be obviously regular deliveries to the site. But I think we will, we should, we will be able to maintain Maple Street as an operating roadway, except for those special conditions. We, we do a lot of construction on operating campuses and hospitals where not only are we adjacent to an existing facility, but more times than not, we're actually in and part of that facility. So we do spend a lot of time with our, our planning operations and developing certain barriers and protocols to maintain the safety of, of the surrounding communities. I do not have a, a slide of the phase two when we go do the demolition, but basically it will be the, the, the mirror image of this where this, this part will be occupied. where this this part will be occupied and our operations will be on the north end of the site. At that time, all the trucks will be entering in through off of South Avenue and then exiting onto Cherry Street. And that will be the only access and egress to the site during these operations. And needless to say, at that time, all of the pedestrian traffic will be from Center School Lot directly across the street, as Chris identified earlier. So I think if we have one more slide, it really just shows the the completed project. Yep. And with that, I will turn it back to Brian from Robinson and Cole for our close.
Thank you very much, Ty. It's Brian Smith, Robinson and Cole. So you you've now heard our responses, where we have addressed, first of all, the first requirement is the overlay zone amendment, and then the map change, and then the details for the special permit and site plan. Now, the the obviously, the the largest question and much of the time that was spent by some members of the public was the preservation or potential preservation of the 1913 building. And we have certainly not ignored their concerns, their passionate desires to keep it in place. We've studied their plans. We've studied the their proposals. And we've given careful consideration to this, not only in the last few months, but over the last 10 years about how to to what to do for the library overall. So what we have come to a conclusion is that, as as heartfelt as this is, that this, the the library green and the new library is what is, we believe, that though with the prudent and fiscally sound and and land use responsible manner to keep the New Canaan Library as a feature in the 21st century. But one of the things I hasten to add is that we had at the outset, before the public hearings, had made an offer to the Preservation Alliance and to remove the the library building, the 1913 and 1936 structures, if they wish to another site. Now, if the Preservation Alliance has so far not found this acceptable and have argued that this is not a proposal that is any good unless they keep the the library in situ, the existing 1913 and 36 buildings, which, as we have demonstrated, isn't compatible to the desires of the library itself. However, we are going to keep the offer open to them or to anyone else. Regardless, should this commission approve our application as submitted, we will keep that open because you just saw in the discussions by Ty Trigallus that the 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 library is going to remain up and standing during the entire construction process of the new New Canaan Library. And I hasten to add, I I don't think there was more than maybe one person who who had any opposition to the new building. So we are simply talking about retention or their desire for retention of the other building on our private property. And so our position is this, is that we we will leave that offer open for anyone who wishes to take the 1913 and 36 buildings off the property. We will work with whoever wishes to do that, if they want to relocate it somewhere else in New Canaan. The the, but I would add that we, not only, for an example, how we did look at the plans, Mr. Simpson, for example, had challenged us and saying why, and others raised the issue, why wasn't there any ADA parking on the library side of the of the property? And it was all on a Center School. Well, we have added four accessible handicap spaces on the library side. But we do add that the reason that this makes sense is not because they are closer to the entrance of the library. In fact, they are much, they are farther away from what will be the front door. But they will provide access for those who wish to use the library green or for employees, should they need such services, because the employee entrance would be closer to that. So what we have done is actually, we've added four, so we now have a total of 10. So we we are having more than is actually necessary for for that. But, I mean, this is the whole reason we have this public hearing process is that everyone can contribute and offer ideas that that can forge a really good project as the commission is requiring us to do. Now, finally, the the we have done not only that the building could go offsite, but we've also done an independent review of the cost of the building. And and we have reviewed the the how the best to handle pedestrian traffic with a crosswalk. What we have provided meets 11 of the 12, at least 11 of the goals that are consistent with the Planet Development Conservation and Development that we could not otherwise meet. And therefore, we respectfully submit that we are meeting and are consistent with the Planet Conservation and Development with the new proposal. The and we have explained in great detail how the library green space will work. I think we have worked very hard with town staff, with the members of the public, with others over many years. And we are continuing to to work to refine this. And we respectfully request that this commission approve the applications as submitted with the proposed changes that we are offering. And thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
Is John Chris? I have a few questions, if I may. Could you bring up the slide where it shows where the stage is intended to be? It would seem that the stages contemplated in this picture is partly infiltrating the bioswale. I'm wondering, from a structural point of view, if there may be how you're going to keep it upright, permanent footings there or temporary footings? And if so, how will that affect the plants and the soil there and the ability of the bioswale to operate as you intended to?
Maybe Mark and or
So Sure, do you want to take that?
Yeah, no problem. So when we were drawing the stage in, we were excited by the idea that the stage could be sort of surrounded by this planting and really sort of enveloped by the planting. But I think, in reality, whoever is the the stage is a temporary, the stage will be a temporary structure. And whoever is designing the for whatever production or event is happening would be the ones to really decide exactly where the stage goes and how and what the stage is, you know, arrangement would be. We did think that perhaps we could have, if the if the if it was a stage that was going in over and over, we thought that, you know, that area where it's over overlapping is a relatively level area before it starts a one and three slope in. So we thought there could be nestled into the planting some sort of, you know, you know, if it if it turned into that and they wanted a permanent solution, we could apply that there.
Thank you. I also have a question on the trucks, egressing the construction trucks, egressing the parking lot during construction, if you could bring that up, please? And my my question is, it would be a right turn onto Maple, then onto Main. I think everyone in this commission and everyone listening in has tried to make a right or left turn at that corner, and it ain't easy. And then having large trucks on a fairly narrow street, how do they exit that intersection? You'd be going either straight up north into downtown, which prevents challenges, or maybe it to Cherry, which is a state highway, or south into Main. You know, South Avenue is is at least a state highway where there are different rules. I'm wondering what your concept is as far as where the trucks go once they're at that intersection and potential safety issues and disturbance to the neighbors?
Yes, I think primarily the the yellow line that I'm identifying are would be smaller, what we call straight trucks, which would be delivering really to the staging area, which is a smaller and and you know, would not be suitable for any kind of tractor trailer use. So we would designate as part of our our bid documents that larger tractor trailers should enter Maple Street from the east and then enter our site and then exit and 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 then travel down South Avenue, probably, you know, primarily to the south and back towards 95 will be will be the the general traffic flow.
Thank you.
Yep. Which is something we often do, you know, particularly at hospitals or and campuses where very often where we restrict truck traffic or we define a specific routing, we would be prepared to do the same thing here.
And these intersections are wide enough to make safe turns?
Yes, they they should be. I mean, I think there is other truck traffic on a on a daily basis making deliveries.
Thank you.
To the, this is Dan Radman. To the point of the traffic, there was a, I don't know, 80-page report from Langin about the traffic assessment. And then there was another follow-up report by Mike Alante, a kind of a peer review of it. On the Langin report, it didn't really, I I we both got both of these today, so I wasn't able to dig through every single page of them. But from what I was able to assess of the Langin report, the only recommendation that was made, it didn't didn't really have a conclusion of the of the positive or or what the impact was of the current situation of traffic other than a recommendation to the modification of hours of certain events, given the given the 15% increase in floor area and increase of use rooms, specialty use rooms in the space, that there would be overlap of uses. How does that affect the parking strategy for the site? In in addition to Mike Alante's report, also noted, and I don't know if Mike is here or online tonight, he could maybe speak to that report a little more. There's a, there's definitely a difference between the uses. I mentioned the 15% earlier, but the current library, the majority of the space is stacks, book stacks, reading rooms, right? The new library, the majority of the space is event spaces, is event rooms. You've got specialty rooms like the Makerspace, the Teen Center, the the kids' room, the the cooking classes and the and the auditorium, et cetera, et cetera. These are much higher use spaces that are event-driven, that if they overlap, are going to create significant traffic differences compared to the existing use. Can someone from the applicant's side speak to that?
But this is Brian Smith. I think that it may be a sort of a combination of the the Lisa Olden with the the plans now as well as Chris, because I think there's a a host of events actually going on right in the current library. Lisa, maybe you can address that point?
She unmuted, Lynn?
She should be. Hold on, let me unchair.
Did we lose her?
We, I think we did, actually. Oh, there she is.
So maybe we should let Chris talk about the the traffic. And then we can either go to Lisa or I can talk about the programming.
I've been muted now.
If necessary. Oh, great.
So so I think, so, for example, the teen space in the new library is, I believe, almost the exact same square footage as the teen area in the current library. And it is also a mix of open space and stacks. So it's not, it it's actually quite similar sort of space in terms of both its square footage and its makeup in both being stacks and open spaces. In addition, the Makerspace is larger than our current Makerspace. But again, we have quite a lot of square footage devoted to Makerspace today in the library without any stacks. And we will have in the new library. The one thing that is quite significantly different are all the new meeting rooms and the size of the auditorium. So that is in fact correct. But most of the other spaces are similar mixes of seating space and stack space. The big change is the amount of of meeting rooms.
So to the to the rent, your own consultant Langin made a recommendation that the hours of usage for events and some of the spaces be modified so that they either be extended and create less overlap between them. Was that taken into consideration?
So the, I think this generally refers to the auditorium use, which currently is primarily at 7:00 PM and later in the evenings on weeknights and afternoons and sometimes evenings on the weekends. So the way that the traffic will flow in, the use of the the other library spaces is typically from 9:00 till about 7:00. And then the auditorium use is typically at 7:00 and going into the evening.
And this is Chris Cardney with Langin, and that's that's exactly right. That was in reference to the auditorium use, that the peak use of the library wouldn't really be overlapping with the auditorium. But in general, there's 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 meetings that happen today. There's use groups, and that will continue in the future.
Um, Mike Alante also had some recommendations in his report. I don't know if that just came through today. I don't know if he's here online to speak to that or if you guys had had a chance to look at his report.
Mr. Galante, by the way, is is attending tonight, so we can let him in. So maybe we got the
You want to do that later?
He's in the room now.
Sorry?
He's in the room now.
Okay.
Well.
Well, Dan, who who would you like to hear from?
I'd I'd like to hear from Mike, because he had a number of observations on the Langin report in terms of inaccuracies or differences in quantifying certain statistics on the parking and the usage.
Okay. Mr. Galante.
Mike Galante, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Mike Galante, Odyssey and Hanover. To answer the question, as far as our our last review letter, if you will, was dated last week, April 20th. And in many respects, the letter or memo that came back from Langin, it, I think, Thursday, actually received by us Friday afternoon. What a lot of the attachments received yesterday is in response to that letter. We are reviewing that information that we just received over the last couple of days. And you don't have a review letter on that yet. But in a way, that letter that we're coming out with, and I do have But in a way, that letter that we're coming out with, and I do have a draft of it. We'll start having some more final recommendations from us. They have, Langin has responded to a lot of our comments. We still have some. Minor concerns with some of the numbers. They don't really change the results. We have their analysis of Maple Street with the South Avenue connection from the parking lot directly to. South Avenue now functioning as a two lane, two way driveway. That does mitigate our concern as far as how the traffic will be backed up or queuing on Maple Street. Mainly on on Saturday midday, which is the busiest time as far as the. Library traffic related to the traffic on the streets around the library itself. It does not eliminate that queuing that was found in the report. Prior to last week, but it certainly mitigates it. Where the back of that queue is probably in the vicinity of the crosswalk. So we don't, I don't have any final conclusions as far as recommendations of some of the things that we just received in the last. Well, since Friday afternoon and yesterday, but that's what we're leading up to. To touch on the events, the auditorium use. That was certainly a consideration when we were looking at parking last fall. And there was a lot of discussion on exactly when those events would occur. And as mentioned. You have many of those events, special events would occur, you know, weekday night or Saturday, probably 7:00 PM at night. That's when the library activity is, you know, the normal library activity is dropping off significantly. So the scheduling of those events would certainly remain seven o'clock or later. And as, and I think we actually mentioned that as a suggestion months ago. And we would certainly continue to make that recommendation to mitigate, one, the parking impact and the parking demand. Between the, I'll call it the regular library activity and a special event that may occur. As far as meetings, meeting rooms and activities that does occur today. It's very difficult to analyze a. Typical day at the library when you may have, you know, special events, but in the traffic. Estimates that were identified by Langin as far back as September of 2018. And modified a little bit more recently with the February report. I guess really reflects a typical day at the library. And that was taken into account with the parking analysis that we came up with and Langin did their own. I guess last December, we all came out with reports. More recently, the actual traffic studies. I think we're up to the fourth. Traffic report from Langin. And the reason why there are four at the moment is because they're simply responding to our comments that we've come up with over. Well, three, four months of time. So it's kind of a revolving, evolving process. And I can only say at this point, we're not, we don't have any final recommendations or final findings, but we're certainly leading up to that.
And one more thing in response to Mr. Radman. In the number of programs that we have in the evenings prior to COVID was about 700 evening programs a year. With about. Between 102, 200 people per program. So this is what's happening in in the current situation. And the capacity of the room could go up to 350 in that space, but the pattern of use. Is already well established with several evening programs per week at up to 200 people at the moment.
But aren't you increasing your capacity for. What I'll affectionately call the lingerers, you know, people who are going to not just come for an event or not just come for. You know, picking out a book or sitting there and reading a book, but for. Study slots, for meeting rooms, for tutoring, for all of those events that your second floor, your upper level plan. Is providing substantial amount of those types of. Meeting room or co working environments that are not as prolific in the current plan.
Absolutely. I was just referring to the the evening use that is that happens. Asynchronously typically to those uses you've said, but you're right, the. The upstairs activities, there is a lot more space, a lot more meeting rooms. Particularly up on the second floor. The expectation would be that that increase will be. Daytime use, but the evening use, which could increase with the larger auditorium, won't be happening at the same time.
So was was that increase in use and duration of use taken into account during any of the parking studies?
You want me to answer that?
This is Chris Cardney. So from our perspective. We looked at parking in two different ways. We looked at one as the auditorium, since it's such a large gathering space. That we've just been talking about. And then for the library itself, we looked at. We looked at industry standards, the IT. That looked and studied libraries and they came up with a parking space per. Square footage and of that parking, of that square footage, it was typical library. Programming. So there's a certain amount of reading rooms, meeting space, workers, et cetera. So. I don't have the breakdown of what that was, but it was, it was kind of a traditional library.
I guess, I guess that's where I'm going with it because, you know, what we've heard from the library's presentation is this. This is meant to be a facility that's at the cutting edge of what our. Libraries mean to the community now in the present, not what they used to be and how they used to function. So it seems that the traditional metrics of measuring the usage and the frequency and duration of usage. Are kind of not out the door, but are a little bit antiquated when. Trying to determine the parking capacity for a facility where there's going to be people, like I said, lingering. That are going to be in the facility for much longer durations than historically have been present in libraries.
So I think I can speak to that a little bit in that we're already seeing that, but it's happening in spaces that aren't. Purpose built. So, for example, we've had to repurpose the art gallery in the last five years. To be doing double duty throughout the day as a meeting space in the morning, tutoring space in the afternoon. Event space in the evening. We have tutoring happening in pretty much every square inch of the library in the afternoons. We have. Made closets into meeting rooms today. So a lot of that is all happening today. And then we submitted. An awful lot of door data. We measured door traffic through the all the doors of the library. And we were able to submit all of that traffic flow in and out of the library. To all of the traffic engineers that looks back. They looked at about an 18 month period pre-COVID to establish all of those patterns. But that type of activity, even though we don't have. The spaces required is already happening in the library today.
If I may, this is Mike Galante again. If I may, when we were looking at the parking aspects of this, which was really the first step that we looked at over the summer, last summer. And last fall. It was done in two steps. We we looked at other nearby. Libraries and so on, and we looked at IT as Chris had mentioned, but. We have found that this library needs about 102 spaces for its typical day. But the second part of that equation was the the event use of the auditorium in the evenings and weekend evenings and so on. And what I saw and what I. Felt was the right use since as far as parking demand was the availability of the entire Center School lot, which is 173 spaces. That could be used when the library activity is kind of winding down, and that's why it's at seven o'clock or later in the evening. And then there was always a discussion of the other parking lot across Cherry Street as available for a special, special, special event that may, you may have a demand for more than that. So we certainly look into that as far as the impact and need from the two different types of use of the library. One is a typical day. And one is an event where the auditorium was filled to capacity. And I know we, I I did have a number for that as far as the number of parking spaces needed for full capacity. But the the other part of that equation is the entire Center School lot is available eight o'clock at night, I'm sure. And that's, that's the 173 spaces plus what might be available at the lot on the other side of Cherry Street in front of the library, or maybe in this case, the back of the library. And from a traffic perspective, if I may, from the traffic perspective, again. We're looking at the typical peaks of the roads around the, around the library itself, which tends to be the commuter peaks, if we have commuter peaks ever again, which I think we will. And the peak of the library in some respects occurs late in the afternoon, and that's what was actually analyzed in the Langin report. And that's what we've been focusing on. We have not forgotten about, you know, an event for the auditorium that's occurs at seven o'clock at night. If you look at the volume on the streets around the library at seven or eight o'clock at night, it's significantly lower than, say, five o'clock in the afternoon. So the analyses are based on the higher background volumes along with the typical busy time for the library. So. We've certainly taken that to account in our review of the traffic studies provided by the applicant.
Good traffic, John Chris, a traffic safety issue regarding Ingress and Negress to the Center School lot. Could you bring up the schematic again, please?
Is this the, is this the one you were looking for?
Yes, thank you. If you can make it a little bigger, please. I I'm looking at the entrance that would be activated, the two way entrance on on South Avenue. What about safety issues? For example. That whole area tends to back up and I've seen it as a real choke point getting into town. And I would see a left turn out of there potentially dangerous. Wondering what the traffic engineer's thoughts may be. And. You know, whether some sort of signage or something may be necessary to indicate that there's an entrance there. To to warn motorists because the entrance really is not used at all now. And with more traffic there, turning in or out, including turning in, becomes another choke point to get backup. Just wondering what the traffic engineers may think about safety issues and. Traffic jams.
Chris, go first and I'll follow up.
Sure. Yep, this is Chris Cardney and. Yeah, we looked at the site distances there. It actually works out well with the design speed going through there and. This just really gives people that are making a left onto south a shortcut. Rather than making a left on the maple and the left onto south. Through two intersections, this gives them direct access to South Avenue. And it's far away, far enough away from the intersection with Maple where they're, you know, we don't envision queuing past, past the point of this driveway.
Again, Mike Galante, we we are looking at that. The Langin report does indicate that. For the posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour, 280 feet of sight distance would be needed and and is available. Our comment will be, it has to be based on the 85 percentile speed, which probably is a little bit higher than 25 miles per hour. And greater than 280 feet, but based on my observations, I went out there again, I guess, the day after we had our field visit. There is adequate sight distance there and the town engineer's suggestion to make that driveway straight, if you will, coming straight out of the parking lot. Moves it away from the subtly property line of the parking lot area, which is the town controlled. And that will really actually maximize or improve sight distance to the south on South Avenue. So we're comfortable. That that location is okay from an operational point of view. And as far as signing, there would obviously be a stop sign coming out of the driveway with a stop bar. And as far as, you know, some warning signs on South Avenue arriving from the south. We will probably, and I haven't reached this point yet, would probably recommend some type of intersection warning sign. Tiger and I will certainly discuss that and and the town engineer. As far as if is that necessary? And it it may be. We don't want to oversign something. But we certainly look into that. And as far as the Maple Street intersection, it has a crosswalk today, a stop sign and stop bar. That certainly will remain in the future condition. As far as the crosswalk treatment, that's, we're obviously still discussing that. What it might be, whether it's raised, not raised and so on. And there was a discussion with the police commission, I think, a week ago, last Wednesday night. So that those are ongoing discussions that will continue.
Thank you.
Other commissioners?
This is Kristin Yelson. I wanted to make some comments on the memo regarding the overlay zone that was provided. I'm assuming probably. In response to comments that I made at the last meeting or two meetings ago. So the memo starts off by saying that by not, one of the benefits or one of the reasons to do the overlay zone. Is that by not doing it, it would require the addition of numerous regulations to each underlying zoning district. And I just wanted to clarify. That when I made comments at the previous meeting, I was not suggesting that you come in with an application. For this project in both the apartment and the business A zone. What I advocate is that you choose one of the underlying zones and come in with a map change for the entire site. To one of those zones. Probably my estimation, the business A zone would be. The better option there. I understand now. Thank you for the information on why the 2011 application was withdrawn. Which also requested to rezone that site, the entire site to business A. But in my opinion, there's a pretty big difference between rezoning a site that's currently being used as parking lots and rezoning a site that's going to have a $38 million building on it. And I can't speak for the rest of the commission, but I wouldn't have nearly as many concerns today, you know, with a site plan with a a building proposed on it for a quasi public library. Approving a rezoning to that site for business A. In terms of the requirement or the statement that numerous changes would have to be made to the regulations, I I've taken a pretty serious look at your project and what the business A zone allows, and I only see three. Barely minor changes that would need to be made. The first would be that the business A zone requires a maximum front yard setback, which you guys exceed. We already have a section in section 4.9D for exceptions to yards, and I don't see why we couldn't add an additional one for quasi public libraries. And then. We allow maximum building height up to three stories for libraries, which you guys are under, under, but. I would change that language to read quasi public library just to be consistent. And then the last piece is your floor area ratio, which by my calculations is 0.44. The maximum floor area ratio in the business A zone is 0.4, so you're slightly above that. But if you look at the chart on section 4.8L. We break out different floor area ratios for different uses in the business A zone. And again, I don't see why we couldn't do that for a quasi public library as well. So, you know. That's kind of where I was going and that was what I was trying to get at last time. I'm not sure if that came through. The biggest issue I see with using, coming in with a zoning change to a business A zone. Is that you'd have to comply with the village district design guidelines, which. And frankly, a lot of which support the project that you've put here. But it also says repeatedly in those that whenever possible, historically or architecturally, significant structures or features should be reused and incorporated. Into any development or redevelopment proposal. Again, I don't think that's a showstopper. We're already having the conversation about the 1913 library, not because of the village district design guidelines per se, but because that's what the community wants. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that that's where I was coming from and, you know, I appreciate your memo, but those were the points that I wanted to make. Thank you.
Mr. Bash?
Hi, James Bash. A few questions. First question is, you mentioned. Four parking spaces onsite that would be ADA compliant. What is the nearest entrance to the library for those individuals parking in those four spots?
I think we've measured that, Chris, or somebody I think has that measurement.
Yeah, I have to, I have to look.
Is it, is it the entrance that's on the Maple Street, facing Maple Street?
No, it's the entrance into the courtyard.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, please.
Oh, sorry, they, those spaces, the closest entrance will be the entrance. Off the terrace. So the inside corner of the terrace at the top of the green.
Can you, can you please pull the schematic back up?
Then we need a.
Right. So if you, if you see where those accessible spots are, and if you were to circumnavigate. Going clockwise around the outside corner. The building, keep going, keep going, keep going, and now make a right turn around in in, keep going. of the building, keep going, keep going, keep going, and now make a right turn around in, in, keep going into the terrace and down, down, down into the corner, into there. So that's why Brian was mentioning that those spots are not so much there, there, that is a further distance from those spots to that doorway than the other spots in the center school lot distance to the front door. However, these spaces will serve the green extremely well, as you can see, as well as the staff entrance, which is right near where the, where those spots actually are.
Okay. And then if there is a scenario where the 1913 library is preserved, obviously we have to consider that. I wanted the library's perspective on what would constitute a taking in that scenario. And it's, it's a question for you, Mr. Smith, in terms of we have a situation where the library owns, privately owns the land upon which the 1913 building sits. But the public has obviously over time had a significant amount of contributions to the operating costs of the library. You know, along with being in some ways a benefactor in other ways, whether it's the acquisition of 48 South Ave, a potential grant of $10 million and so on. So in that type of context, I was hoping Mr., Mr. Smith could clarify what the library's position would be in the scenario of preservation of the 1913 library of whether that would constitute a taking.
Yes, I'll answer that question. The, so as we noted at the outset, the, the, the land, as you correctly point out, is entirely owned by the New Canaan Library, which is a private, not-for-profit, 501(c)(3) organization. It is not part of the New Canaan government or, or any other state or federal agency. So it's, this is, what you're looking at is private property. So you have to take that into account. So when there, the, the fact that the library is, is a charitable institution and receives grants from the government does not convert it into being a part of the government. That's, so that's the analysis, the legal analysis, which is what you're requesting. The, so to impose a condition that was not suggested by Patricia Sullivan, although it was seemingly implied by one of her, one of the people in the Preservation Alliance to actually require that the library have a condition that the, the 1913 building must stay in place would, would not be proper. That, because that, that's, that is not there's, there's no basis for that kind of, to require the library to maintain a building for which it has no use in, in this regard. I mean, the commission obviously can turn down the application before it on other grounds if it so chooses, which we, you know, passionately hope you do not do. The, but there is, and I think Attorney Sullivan was correct to say that what, what the Preservation Alliance is actually requesting is, I think she would use the word cooperation with the library and to work together to try to solve the issue and, but not to actually impose a condition. And the only way that a condition like that would be acceptable to the library would be for us to voluntarily accept it, which the library, as I said before, is not ready to do. So that, that's the, the legal answer. I do hasten to add, as I said before, at the conclusion of the initial remarks, that the library remains open to anyone, including the Preservation Alliance, who wants to work with us to remove the building in its entirety, even though that would require, as we said, you know, sort of a specialty demolition and not complete demolition. But that is something that the library is going to keep on the table. Should this commission approve the proposal that you have before you?
Are there any court case precedents that you're aware of? Where, in a similar situation where a town is contributing to a significant amount of the operating costs of the building, whether or not that contribution would affect, change the entity, as you guys are describing it, into a quasi-public institution and under a legal umbrella that no longer would constitute a taking if the government decided, or if a town body decided in favor of preservation of a, of a property within that, within that privately owned lot.
Under the, the facts that we have, I mean, no, I, I can't think of a, a single case that, that meets that criteria. Under the facts as we have them here, unless they look, did this, in fact, there is case law to the opposite, where the fact that a, a private institution receives monies from the government in the form of grants does not convert it to a governmental entity. So that, that's, it's more in that direction. The Fifth Amendment is a very powerful amendment to the United States Constitution, as is the, you know, the, the coordinate Connecticut Constitution, that you cannot take property without just compensation. And the fact that the, the, the town government is providing funds in a manner as a contribution is, is an excellent point and certainly worthy of, of people having the comments that they are all free to make here. But when you ask me the legal question, which is what you're asking me here, then I don't have a precedent where this has converted, you know, the, the library into some sort of governmental institution. So it would, yeah.
Understood. Thank you for that. And then a couple of other questions. One, there was a slide that was specific to the itemized costs of turn of construction versus the itemized costs that were articulated by Mr. Rothbart in the previous meeting. If we could go to that one.
It's around slide 23, I think. Or 24.
Okay. So before I ask a couple of questions about the itemized costs within this, and I recognize it might not be legible for a lot of people, but I'll, I'll try to paraphrase it. Overall, kind of conceptually thinking about this, and I don't have a background in this area, so clarification is, is helpful. When I'm thinking about the implied per square footage costs of the entire library project, we're talking about 895 square feet, so 38 million divided by 42,614 square feet. When we're talking about Turner Construction or Darm's estimate of the restoration and the updating of the 1913 building, the implied per square footage cost is a little over $800. So there's roughly a 10% difference between new construction of a very sophisticated building versus restoring and updating an existing structure. We can debate, you know, one can debate what condition it's in to make it suitable for use. So how do I, how can I reconcile that, that roughly only 10% difference between the 895 square feet of the new construction versus the 805 square feet implied by Turner and Durham for restoring and updating an old building?
This is Lynn Temple. I can jump in. Lynn Temple, Turner Construction again. I think the, the, the biggest aspect to that probably is the law of, of large spaces. And when I think about smaller buildings, obviously built for commercial use or built for this kind of use versus larger buildings, when you think about, let's say, an elevator is a great example of something that, you know, let's say it's a two-stop elevator and it costs, you know, $100,000. Obviously, the bigger the building that it can serve, then that goes down in terms of a cost per, per square foot. The other things that are much like that are things like roofing and exterior wall, which on a, on a smaller building like this, the exterior wall ratio, which we look at, which is the quantity of wall to grow square footage is probably well over one, it might even be two square foot of exterior wall to, to grow square foot versus the, the new library, which is probably more like .5 or something like that. I don't have it on top of my hands, but it's probably in that neighborhood, if not lower. Oftentimes for larger buildings, it might be .4, .3. So sometimes when you look at something in terms of cost per square foot, that those, those dollar values don't always ring through. And as an estimator, certainly looking at size and complexity and things like that is often a big part of it.
Understood. And then on just a couple of the itemized estimated costs, it seems like the largest deviation between Turner's estimates or Mr. Temple, yours, your estimates and Mr. Rothbart's estimates are in the mechanical engineering and plumbing and fire protection upgrades along with interior finishes and repairs. So let's just go to MEPFP, the 484,000 versus 110,000 estimate from Mr. Rothbart. That gap of $384,000, can you talk a little about what is within your $484,000 estimate that justifies that expense? And I'm going to ask the same question about the interior finishes and repairs of 265,000 versus 50,000 estimated by Mr. Rothbart.
Excellent question. And, and obviously the first thing I want to point out is that they are both estimates without question. None of us really know the exact details of what we're doing. But at least within my approach of it, I, when I looked at, why did I see obviously the full MEP, but it seemed like all the MEPs that drove that building, essentially the original 1913 building and even the 1936 building, for the most part, had been moved out of those footprints. And so we're really going to need all new systems that are, that are code compliant. And so that's kind of the way I looked at it is, let's say even there was stuck work that maybe remained or piping that remained. It would be very likely based on projects that I've seen that that no longer is usable. And so even though it may be behind something that is of great value, let's say it's behind a, a wood panel or, or a, a nice ceiling that we want to keep. Unfortunately, those things aren't usable anymore in today's environment. So I'm envisioning this is essentially a complete gut from an MEP perspective, and that does drive a lot of my assumptions on finishes. So they are very much connected and they, they also have a lot to do with assumptions on my expectations of what may be hazardous materials. And so you start to unravel this thing. If you want to create a, a, a building that's free of those things and can function in current code, you know, then you start to, to pull back. MEP systems are going to, going to be brand new. And, and that's going to affect a lot of the existing finishes that are there to remain. We're just not going to be able to get to those without pulling some of the other stuff out.
Okay. Thank you. And my final question is just regarding the event green in the proximity to Cherry Street, where only the bio swell and a sidewalk separates the two. And I'm wondering, I'm trying to think of what, what the noise level would be coming from Cherry Street or coming from, from Maine. You know, if we're having a play, if there's a concert, given that lack of much separation, you know, outside of some trees and the bio swell and a sidewalk between Cherry and the event green. So, you know, for, 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 for anyone within that event green that's listening to a performance, watching that play or whatever event it is, what is the, the noise level likely to be? And would that mitigate potentially one's experience? You know, with the noise emanating from Cherry and Maine, I'm just trying to think of what that would be like for, for those participating.
So I'll let Sarah mark a little bit up, but I'll, I'll address it to where we've seen all across the country in the last year and more, where outdoor restaurants have popped up in areas right on the street and they've taken over parking spaces and other areas. And I can tell you in urban conditions that the enjoyment level really does not change, even though you're directly on the street or adjacent to the street. I think it's important to, to speak about the buffers and the layers in which we created from Cherry and from Maine. And while they, they will definitely change the experience. They will change the sound slightly. But it's, it, it's treated more as an urban condition. And I think we have to think of it in that regard. But I, I have no doubt whatsoever that the experience on those spaces and even the seating area along Cherry in and amongst the, the double layer of trees will be one that people will truly enjoy.
Thanks for the time.
I have a question. This is Dan Radman. Was Center Brook ever charged by the library to develop a scheme that would keep the 1913 structure?
So I think I mentioned in, in the March 30th presentation that we've been working on this for 10, 10 years. And early on, we had a series of workshops with over 40 people from New Canaan, a representative sampling of people from New Canaan. And originally, we absolutely did look at the options for ways in which to incorporate the original building. And we've had some 12 different schemes of ways in which we could incorporate that. So given that it's location, part of the issue really to understand, if you think about it, is that it's, the way we are doing the library right now, we're building the library, keeping the, the existing in place and then tearing down the existing and developing the green. If you were to keep the 1913 or 1913 and 1936 in place, you'd actually have to phase construction, build it over time. So you build a portion of the library on the corner of South and Maple. You would then demolish a portion of the library and then extend the rest of it. So it not only, it, it does one of a couple of things. It, it either forces the library to close for a certain amount of time, forces the library to be in a reduced function for a certain amount of time. But it also extends the duration of construction and the cost for construction substantially. So the 10 different schemes that we looked at were ways in which we could either incorporate the 1913 or move it and use it specifically in different ways on the site. All of those over the number of years, given the logistics, the phasing, the construction duration, the cost, and then ultimately the usability of the program for the library determined that it just wasn't feasible for them, for their programmatic needs and for their mission.
It's just, I, I understand that. And that's real purely a consequence of time and cost, right? And each go together, right? So it's not that it's not possible. It's just that the most cost efficient and relatively painless solution is to leave the existing library in place, build a new one, move into it when it's done and then demolish the old. So it's not that it's not possible though, because there's innumerable examples out there of where historic buildings have been kept, libraries specifically have been kept. The existing structure has been kept and a new addition has been done. The two have been connected. There's obviously been a sequence of construction that had to take place and moves and cost implications, et cetera. I mean, we have one right up the road in Ridgefield, which is a prime example of, of what we're discussing here. I mean, the Morgan Library in New York City is the prime example. And be, and to be quite
And be then to be quite frank with you, there's a library in West Springfield, Massachusetts that did exactly the same thing. Happens to be a library that Centerbrook Architects designed. Same thing with the Lewis Walpole Library that you guys did. Different context, different vernacular. But again, a historic structure where there were additions done to the library. Same thing with Cold Spring.
Sure, of course. I mean, there are.
It's just hard. It's it's. We know that there's cost implications and everyone's worried about that, but it's it's for the last few meetings of hearing. Such determined. And finality on the decisions of how to design this library, I keep hearing it isn't compatible. It isn't compatible with the current design. Of course, it's not compatible with the current design because the current design doesn't take into account the existing library. So there may have been other. Studies and designs. But it just, I I'm sure you can understand where the. The voices of opposition, as they've been called, are are coming into this, seeing other examples where other towns, other cities, other municipalities. Have been able to achieve what we're trying to do here and haven't been told it isn't compatible.
Well, I guess, you know, I'll I'll let I'll let the library talk about that. I mean, you're absolutely right. In our resume, we have done. A number of of projects in which there have been historic buildings that have been phased and incorporated. You're absolutely right. It's entirely feasible. And it it has been done with success in a number of areas. What I can tell you is that we did look at, as I said, twelve different plans. They were reviewed by. A lot of people, both on the library and the board and the public. And ultimately came to the plan that we presented to you today and in the last month.
So due to due to cost and schedule and sequencing, this is the best plan?
Can I jump in?
Not, it's quite honestly, it's not just cost, schedule and sequencing. It's it's really programmed. When you leave that building in situ, it changes the nature of the way in which the library lays out. And there are some challenges with the way in which that happens. So it's not just that. And in fact, what you end up doing perhaps is increasing the footprint of the library. Or compromising some of the programmatic spaces within the library. And the reason I know that is because within the twelve different plans that we looked at, that was our experience.
You were going to say, Lisa?
But no, I think Mark Mark has answered it very well.
Hey, any other commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kaskin and Mr. Herring are both waiting and they're.
Well, you gentlemen, and speak up.
All right, why don't you go first?
I have a very brief question. What is the expected? Duration of construction, assuming that the nineteen thirteen library is not engaged?
Sixteen months.
Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, so I I had a couple of quick questions, maybe not entirely quick, but one comment I had was just in the lead nature of the building. I think on our onsite visit, I asked the question, is the building going for a lead cert? And reading the earlier materials regarding the library, there were references to lead and I think in looking at Centerbrook's site, you've done over. Twenty lead projects and we had a slide presented in the last presentation highlighting the building envelope, the mechanicals, the solars. Et cetera. And it just struck me as strange that, given your. X percentage into that investment, you wouldn't pursue the lead. Can you articulate why?
Sure, absolutely. So you're right, we have done a lot of lead projects. My first lead project was over twenty years ago. So the important thing that that we came to here is that sustainability. Is really an important part of the mission of the library. It's important to us as good practice, but also. Forward thinking. And so what we have done, I I understand completely the amount of work. And the amount of requirements that go into. Creating and and logistically going through the lead checklist and getting a lead project. And it was the library's contention after a lot of discussions that. We should focus on the sustainability aspects that are critical to them and their mission. So we have focused carefully on the envelope. On the energy use intensity, the EUI, on daylighting, on those experiential qualities. That make the library what it is. We've also focused very heavily on sustainability on the site. And while many of those points, if not all, are part of what would be in a lead project. There are some things outside of that that are lead requirements that are just are not important to the library. So yet the. The goal was to focus on sustainability for the library, not pursue lead certification.
Okay, so really desire the the library to not pursue those last check marks that would get you across the finish line. But. As I understand it, much of the much of the direction of the building towards the envelope, the solar, the water containment. And in reading the lead site, it seemed like there was quite a bit of effort going in that direction. So that's, thank you for articulating that. Sure, welcome. So the the second question I had was on on pedestrian access in the lawn and I really enjoyed the the further detail. That Ms. Sarah Lawrence presented earlier. I had a couple of comments in looking at the Harvard Plan and some of the other comments about mid-block connectors. The the two things that struck me in comparing the Harvard Plan and and the the Northampton Plan. Was the the midpoint monolithic blocks on the pathways that created intermediary seating areas. And when I looked at the arcs of the the pathways that connect Cherry and Maine to the main terrace, it seemed. Lacking of any waypoints like the Harvard and Northampton Design. If you look at slide. Like I pulled it up here. Thank you for providing the slide deck earlier. You look at slide, let's just call it. Sixty-two and. Actually, no, sixty-seven, Lynn, if you could go to sixty-seven. You see here in the in the distance, this perimeter walkway has these. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they're called monolithic stones, these large blocks that act as de facto seating walls. And when we looked at slide sixty-eight, the next slide. You have seating up at the the destination and you're seating at the curb. But there doesn't seem to be seating along the perimeter, which I thought was just a. Strange to me. And I was curious, is is there a? A reason for not including? Mid-block seating? And that question's for Sarah. Not sure if she's still on.
Hi, guests, thank you. We were really designing for the most flexibility. And so we did not, we have not included benches along those those pathways. But we have talked internally with the team and with the library about donor opportunities and that. Actually, that point has come up that some of the larger granite block benches that we're including around the terrace. Could be included along possibly that curved path and sort of surrounded by the planting that's over there. So while we haven't included it in our sort of budget and our our project budget at this time, we have talked to. Talked about it, about the benches being donor opportunities and and having more benches through the site.
Thanks, Sarah. That's helpful. The the second, second question there was. You talked about the mid-block entryway here on Cherry and. Which I understand creates a nice midpoint entry and is in the P O C D. My my concern is if you go to the. Slide eighty, Lynn, go down here. If you look up towards the corner of. Well, I guess the Main Street. Center, you have a what looks to be a sidewalk connection or a stair connection up to the terrace. Which creates a mid-block connection from Maine here. And, you know, if I'm a pedestrian coming up Main Street and want to get to south, you know, in my head, having. You walk through many parks or Bryant Park in New York, one of the great things about a park is you can walk cross currently through it and experience it. And I I recognize that you have the grade there, so that would need to be a stair. But I was just curious on and whether there was a a thought that. From a pedestrian circulatory perspective, you thought about a mid mid-block entry point via stairway to the terrace such that. You create more permeability to the site and more cross currents as you as you have the access from, you know, mid-block on the three other perimeters.
That is a good point, and we have talked about that as a team. At one point, you know, right now, we're connecting. There's a path that's more of a maintenance path off of Main Street and connecting to the lower level of the building. And at one point, we were designing a stair and a. And a like path up to that upper terrace. What has changed and what is not shown in this diagram here? This is actually of an older site plan showing the green. When we were planning for that access on that side, we were planning on that. On removing sort of the hillside in the topography of a long maintenance, a long main street and the. And the stone wall, the existing stone wall, and actually had stormwater infiltration in that location. And so there was more of a sort of pedestrian access. On in line with the grade of the sidewalk. And after studying the site and the way that the slopes worked, we decided that it really seemed. To make most sense to keep the existing sort of. It is sort of an existing hillside in a way now and allow the water to go sort of where it wants to go, which is. On the north edge of the site. And so now we would be sort of, I think, struggling to make a connection through that. Through that garden. It didn't seem, it didn't seem like it worked as 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 well as it did when it was a stormwater garden in that location.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, if we look at.
So I'll just, I'm I'm sorry, I'll just add one other thing. We we in the in the discussions with the library. And with the board and a number of people they talked to, talked about access along Main Street. And who would in fact use the stairway and the platform up to the terrace? And in all the discussions, it seemed like. Access along Maple up to the front door or access from the corner of Cherry and Maine were really the primaries. And the people along Maine, if you were parking there, would go to one or the other. And the mid-block connection along Main Street really in the in the feedback didn't seem to make sense. So in addition to what Sarah talked about, it was in part programmatically that we took it out.
Okay, I respect that. I just wanted to understand that because I I do feel like the mid connection, mid-block connection is is powerful.
Sure.
Last question on on pedestrian circulation on slide fifty-three. I was curious on why the Maple Street sidewalk isn't pulled back from the curb. From the curb to the pull-off like the sidewalk is in the. The complete streets dictate, why wouldn't you pull it back for four feet like the south half one is? Is that a tree issue or?
Not sure I'm understanding the the question. Sorry.
Right. So if you look at, maybe it's easier to look at slide fifty-four. And versus slide fifty-five. So on slide. Fifty, what are we on here? Sorry, this is the Maple Street. You see how they the the sidewalk is adjacent to the curb? And there's green space to the right, I guess, you know, to the, you know, what we're looking at between. And then if you.
Oh, I see.
If you look at slide fifty-four. You can see that there's grass on both sides of the pedestrians, which is, I believe, what we. We've asked for in in other flooding areas. So if you look at again slide fifty-three. It seems odd to me that there'd be effort to pull the sidewalk against the curb on the Maple section. Versus pushing it back the four feet and having it die into the pullout.
I think these are existing.
That is not existing.
Maple Street is a new sidewalk, a new condition. One thing that we are showing is that the. I don't know if it's easy to tell, but the the area of the sidewalk between that is at the pull-off is a flush condition. So that that's easy to sort of access for. To come out with a wheelchair out of man. And then there were, there actually was a tree that we were trying to save. That we're not able to save where we're planting. And I think, though, really. Having space of contiguous green space south of those walls and those wall arrangements surrounding the children's library, I think. In my mind, I think for that short expanse of sidewalk. It seems like the a larger sort of green space outside of the children's garden makes more sense than dividing it. And and having the the sidewalk continue, but maybe Chris or Mark has a more.
That's helpful, Sarah. I I understand that. And it does, it does create the symmetry on on both sides, so that's.
Yeah, and and this is Chris Cargney. And just to clarify, on the south side of of Maple, you have the sidewalk flush with the curb. And to the east of the drop-off, the sidewalk is flush with the curb. So through the drop-off, which we, you know, want to bring the sidewalk there, it's really just an extension of that treatment of the street too.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, any other commissioners?
That's all.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Smith, what I'd like to do next is. I think some of the commissioners wanted to ask questions of Mr. Simpson and then see if the New Canaan Preservation Alliance has anything new for us. But and we can come back to you and the team, but anything else that you're on for now?
Yeah, I don't, I'm just in inquiring whether the commission is considering closing the hearing tonight, continuing on to another date.
We will, we will continue this because we're we're not, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit later, we're not there on the traffic. But we will continue.
Okay, and I guess my my second point just for your consideration that if you do continue because that we would at least. Ask you to consider if you. ask you to consider if you would be willing to do a, a special meeting for, for the library. Uh, assuming that we have the information you need on the traffic available to you in a timely fashion.
And, um, it, we'll absolutely consider it, but the, the objective.
Yeah.
Now, what is the objective of a special meeting?
Well, to, to, uh, to give everyone a final opportunity to say whatever they need to say, because, you know, there's a lot of input from all sides on this. And so to devote yourself to this and then hopefully close the public hearing on, on whatever evening that might be. And then you, you would then have it ready for your deliberations and whenever it's appropriate for the commission to do so.
Yep. Uh, commissioners, uh, when we get a little closer to ending this, hopefully soon for this evening, uh, or Lynn, remind me to, uh, discuss that with all of you. Why don't you think about in the, in the time being? And of course, Mr. Smith, I will need your, uh, agreement to continue this since I think we're out of hearings. Um, and that's my understanding, even though, uh, unless we're still in an emergency situation, but um, I assume I'll have the applicant's permission to, uh, continue this.
Yes, you will.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Um, and, uh, we, we, we may be back to you. Um, in fact, I think we will be back to you. So, um, Lynn, do we have Mr. Simpson available?
He, he just joined, uh, I just put him into the group, so.
Okay, great. Okay. Mr. Simpson, um, I believe some of the commissioners may have had additional questions for you. Are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, so commissioners, I think there were some questions for Mr. Simpson. Perhaps not. Mr. Ward.
Let me. Yeah, it's a sort of a, uh, broad, a general question. Uh, the stormwater infiltration that the library plan shows, I believe is about four thousand square feet, uh, along Cherry Street. Uh, and I believe, Mr. Simpson, your, your plan was to have underground chambers for stormwater so that the surface presumably could then be used for, you know, event or lawn space, which would to some extent perhaps offset the loss, the loss, if you want to use that term, of lawn space if the nineteen thirteen library structure is retained, because I think that was about thirty-six hundred square feet. The, uh, yes, that core nineteen thirteen library. Maybe you could comment on, on that.
Uh, yes, Mr. Ward, thank you for the question. And, um, I, I'm assuming that you've, um, got your calculations correct. Um, but yes, I was suggesting and am suggesting that the stormwater detention area, which is shown at the north end of the town green, um, can readily be put on the ground. Um, and I think that there are, there are many ways of achieving stormwater detention and stormwater management. And, um, all of us who work in site work, um, are accustomed to seeing a, a wide variety of techniques. So I, I'm not saying that, um, the, what they're proposing, uh, is a technique that doesn't work, um, anywhere. But I think it's just not appropriate here. And, um, I could just direct your attention, if I may, to Irwin Park, which is familiar to us, I think all. And, uh, in the northeast corner of Irwin Park, right next to the intersection of Wahakme and Weed Street, there is a detention basin which is very similar, uh, in configuration um, and style to this. And I've actually been asked by quite a number of people, you know, what does this detention space look like? Because they're only seeing it in plan. But if you want to see it in physical form, if you go to Irwin, um, there's one there which, um, doesn't look so great, but on the other hand, it does, I think, uh, function well. And the reason I believe it functions well there is because it's on well-drained soil, which was probably never built on, uh, at any time. So infiltration into the ground is probably readily available. Whereas in this particular location, um, the stormwater detention area is going to be on what has been, had a building on top of it. It's been heavily compacted over the years. Um, so I think it's one, not likely to function particularly well as a stormwater recharge area. Um, but also it's taking up valuable space um, right downtown, um, when we could definitely put that entire function underground, just like I did for the parking lot, which we all now park on, um, when we go to the library. And I know that, um, uh, that there are opinions that all stormwater detention basins like the one which is proposed on the plans here sort of drain themselves in seventy-two hours, which is what we heard this evening. Um, but I really question, um, whether that's always the case. For example, if the, if the ground were frozen, and we know very well around here that you can get six inches or twelve inches of frozen ground. Uh, and then you get a, a day where there's rain, um, during the day and a, a cold night, then the water which comes off the roof is going to flood up in that detention basin, and it's not going to infiltrate into the ground at all through that frozen soil. So I just, I guess, to give a short answer to your question, sir, I just would think that this is a stormwater detention technique, which is really not appropriate for, uh, this location. And um, we can read, I've discussed it with the drainage engineers that we work with, and there is more than enough room. In fact, there's twice the amount of room necessary uh, to accommodate it underground in the area of the lawn, which is uh, closest to the Gulf Station on the west side, which would be well away from the nineteen thirteen building a, and any other, um, obstruction. Uh, so I, I think we can uh, achieve everything that the library needs to achieve by way of its drainage requirements um, in a very, very, uh, much more simple and compatible way with this particular site.
So, uh, uh, this, this comment and question kind of piggybacks on what Mr. Radman was alluding to. What you hope for in a really contentious issue like the preservation of the nineteen thirteen library is that there can be some sort of, um, reasonable middle ground between two, two parties that are on, um, seemingly different islands where there's not a lot of communication between each. And especially in the context of, and I'm not sure if a lot of the people that are tuning in are, are aware of this, um, but if they're not, the stated main goal of, of the P O C D is to have an appropriate balance of conservation and development. Um, and so you would hope that, you know, within that context and, um, you know, the valid points from both parties that there could be better communication and working towards concessions possibly on both sides to not achieve an ideal result, because it might be impossible in this situation, but to achieve a little bit more of a middle ground. So my question, Mr. Simpson, and, you know, I would, would want to hear the same from in the library, is what has been your experience in terms of trying to achieve that communication with the representatives of library and trying to work towards in a more, a more amenable solution?
That's, uh, Commissioner James Bash for the record.
Uh, yeah, this is Keith Simpson again for the record, so that Lynn can keep it all straight. Well, I've, um, thank you, Mr. Bash, for the question. Um, I, I made it known to um, members of the building committee and, um, a, a really fairly significant number of people, probably more than a year ago, that I was very, very uncomfortable with the prospect of the nineteen thirteen library, um, not being able to survive the plans for the new library. Um, and I was always available. I mean, I'm in town every day. Um, but I actually never received any call from any member of the building committee, any member of the library, any member of the town government to say, um, you know, we know what you do and we know what your professional activities are in town. Um, could you spare us an hour to just sit down and sort of share your ideas as to what you might have in mind? But nobody did actually ever call. And so that your last planning and zoning meeting was the very, very first time that I was ever able to explain what I had in mind to not just the general public, but almost anybody who was could have been influential in this. So I, I was disappointed not to have the opportunity to articulate a scheme which I've had in mind for probably over a year now.
Okay. And, and my last question for you, Mr. Simpson, is, um, we saw in the presentation today that, um, it was almost a revision of, of, uh, the schematic that you had on the event green where, uh, I think the, the square footage, um, uh, was somewhere around seventy-two hundred square feet versus I believe in your presentation, uh, the dementia, or the square footage was roughly thirteen thousand square feet for the event green. So, um, wanted you to have the opportunity to either say I agree with the assessment of the library tonight or to give your perspective.
Uh, well, thank you, um, for the question. I appreciate it. Um, yes, I was, uh, in the calculations that we were doing and the overlay diagram which was presented tonight. Um, the, it was, uh, sort of lawn to lawn. It was grass to grass. And I don't think uh, that we're really in a situation where we're counting the blades of grass on, uh, the different plants. Uh, the calculations that I was using and would still like to use are that the, um, the space west of the nineteen thirteen building, um, were it be to retain, be retained, um, including the flexi-pave pavement which, a pavement which I have shown there, um, which is very wheelchair-friendly, um, and the terraces are very wheelchair-friendly, um, is also about thirteen thousand square feet. So I actually have on my plan, west of the nineteen thirteen building, um, an area which is, um, shielded from the noise of the intersection of Cherry Street and Main Street. Um, but it's also big enough to accommodate that tent which you just saw. So what we were shown a few minutes ago was a tent which is fifty feet by eighty feet. And, um, you know, I know how to put an overlay on my own drawing. And, uh, I can accommodate one hundred percent of that tent. Um, be, between the Gulf Station property line and the west side of the building. And, uh, the stage is of course a full-time, um, operational, built-in, um, wheelchair-friendly of, in the form of a terrace, two terraces and a covered porch. So what I'm really trying to suggest is that I think we can accommodate whatever the library has in its programs in the space that I've created. Um, plus, the, um, nineteen thirteen building would have bathrooms, which their green does not have. Um, and it would be much quieter and nicely framed by these two buildings, which I really hope will be, um, six years from now, say, both be absolutely first-class, beautiful buildings, living in a neighborly relationship with each other and each being able to use the space that is created west of the nineteen thirteen library in the most compatible way possible, which benefits both buildings.
Thanks. Anybody else for Mr. Simpson? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Um, New Canaan Preservation Alliance, um, I actually have a question for Attorney Sullivan, if she's available.
Um, Ms. Sullivan, if you're here, could you just raise your hand so I can find you really quickly? There you go. Thank you.
Lynn, maybe while I'm asking the question, if there's other members of the team in case commissioners have questions with the team. Attorney Sullivan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Attorney Sullivan, um, I thought when you presented to us last month, you said you had a condition crafted that we should consider. And then when I went back through the presentation, the only thing I found was the slide that said the ask. It, did, is there a proposed condition besides that slide that says the ask?
I, I think in my narrative, I actually, um, you know, I didn't, we can certainly formulate a condition, you know, specific language, but I think the condition would be that, um, the, I mean, and the way I see it, under the, under the village district guidelines, the applicant has a first-order obligation to wherever, you know, whenever possible, historical and architecturally significant structures or features should be reused and incorporated into any development or redevelopment proposal. So that would be the condition that they incorporate. It, it, it's certainly possible and it's not incompatible with the, with their proposal to, to, um, to preserve the nineteen thirteen building. Um, if, but, you know, the alliance is looking to collaborate and cooperate with the library. They're not looking to, to steal anything or move anything, you know, to the, to the extent possible. They want the library, the nineteen thirteen library to remain where it is. And that, and I think the commission has the power to say that under the village district guidelines, um, wherever possible, those historical and architecturally significant structures should be reused. I mean, that's what the guideline says. So that would be the condition that they get their approval to, for their project, you know, just modified or amended to leave the nineteen thirteen building in place. I mean, that, that's the, the simpleness of it. Um, and the language, I'm, I'm certainly, you know, more than happy to help with.
Okay. Um, if, if you feel so inclined, feel free to email the planner who will CC us commissioners with a draft condition.
Happy to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, other questions for the New Canaan Preservation Alliance team?
This is Dan Radman. Um, if there's someone from the New Canaan Preservation Alliance that could speak a little more in depth to the potential reuse of the building. I know there was the presentation from la, from the prior, that wasn't last meeting, it was the meeting prior, about, um, potential uses, um, possible tenants, um, whether it be retail or, uh, some other use. Is there a concrete plan in place to retain a tenant? I mean, there's, there's obviously a, a, um, uh, a valid concern on the part of not just the library, but of the commission, of the people in town that, you know, the last thing we need is another vacant space in town. Um, I mean, I, I just for my own edification, I, I, I took a drive around town yesterday and just counted the number of retail storefronts that are vacant with for lease or for rent signs. Thirty-one storefronts in town. That's staggering for us, you know, a town our size. Um, and that's, I think that's the last thing we want to do is create a condition where we've we've contributed to that type of optics of vacant space in town, unused space. So can someone to the Preservation Alliance, at, at the Preservation Alliance, speak a little more to how this building would be repurposed if, for example, if it was a- How this building would be repurposed if, for example, if it was a standalone building. Um. What, what use you potentially see as a valid use in here, different, obviously a completely different conversation if it's the. Library redesigning to incorporate it into their program. That's a given. But if it's a standalone building.
Just, um, just so I can find you all on the, um, attendee list, if you're on the, um, preservation alliance team, can you just raise your hand really quickly so I can, um, pop up to the top?
Well, while Lynn is doing that, this is Pat Sullivan, and I think the, the biggest difficulty that we have with. With giving you a concrete answer to that is that we don't, we, we haven't been given the agency to, to. To say, okay, you know, the library doesn't want to incorporate it into their program. So go out and find yourself a. You know, a, a, a high-class tenant or a museum or a, um, you know, wha, whatever. I mean, there's lots of options. But, um, it's difficult to say to somebody, well, we'd like to have you come into this wonderful old building, but we're not sure that we can promise you that. So, um, I don't know, Lynn, if you've found the, the others, maybe, um.
Um, we, we, we should have in the room, um, Neely Sticknov and, um. There should also be here, uh, Carl Rothbart or Wes Haynes from your team and. And Charles Robinson's who's being admitted right now.
I think that, uh, this is Neely Banks, uh, Sticknov speaking. Um. It's hard to, uh, evaluate exactly what's going on considering we're in the midst of a pandemic here, but. Don't forget that the building will not be up and running for another two years plus. And a lot of things can change. In addition to that, that is going to be an absolutely prime location. It's not a second floor of a Elm Street building. It's not a retail shop. It is premium. So I think that we will hopefully get a community organization or a couple right now that continue to move around. From place to place, and we would hope to settle in on something that would, that has been historically. A, uh, a group that has been in New Canaan for a long time. And that would be ideal because then they typically have off, um, meeting spaces requirements and, and have a lot of connection to the library to begin with. So that would be our goal. But, you know, again, we've, we've got a couple of years.
Wes Haynes here. Oh, hey, can, can I just jump in? Um, and I'd like to add to what Neely said. Um, you know, we did, uh, early on when the building was, um. Identified as unwanted by the library. We did our due diligence and retained Kirk and Company to do just a market analysis of what this building could support, even within the pandemic era. And it was very positive. Retail was not, uh, not a strong suit. Uh, it, it doesn't lend itself to retail. And I think, you know, we have to take a long-term vision on this building that we may have a number of different uses over time. Um, and we are, as Neely said, we would really love to see a community use in there. Uh, we could also see, uh, a partially rented space. And there's a strong market for that to support the basis of operating and maintaining the building for a short period of time. And it's not impossible to think that at some point the library may. Need the additional space at a future date. So we're keeping all those options on the table right now. But as, as Neely clearly said, we don't have the agency to go out and offer this to anybody and actually develop a plan. We're serious about that with, if we were to become a party to an agreement, we would pursue that, uh, with great determination.
Mr. Chris.
John Chris, um. The, the building is owned by the library. And the land under it's owned by the library and some of the conversation from the. Preservation Alliance seems to indicate that you are or will be in control of the building and. It's a challenge for me to understand how this commission can cause a private owner to transfer real property to somebody else. Uh, I just don't see it. And so if the idea is to preserve the building and the building is owned by the library. One, the building would have to be partially reconstructed because many of the walls are missing and there doesn't seem to be any dis, any disagreement about that. The library and its wisdom could just decide to leave the building there empty with no HVAC or anything else and just be a shell. And, uh, they certainly could do that. It's unclear how this commission, unless you can explain to me, because I'm not getting it. How the, uh, uh, library can be caused or forced to, uh. Turnover ownership de facto or de jure to a, a third party. And, and so ultimately it's the library's decision, as I understand it, on what they would like to do with this building, assuming the building. Remains and is partly reconstructed, which would have to be because again, many of the walls are missing. And, and so ultimately. Um, I, 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 I not really, it's unclear to me how the, uh. Preservation Alliance can really be talking about renting out the building and so forth, since it, it's not theirs. So if you could help me out with some of the legalities here, I would, I'd be very grateful.
Sure. This is Pat Sullivan. Um, I think the role of the commission is either to. Approve or deny the application or to modify it and approve it. And under your regulations, under the village district guidelines, you have the, the right to, to oblige the library. To, uh, to reuse, um, that building. On their property. Now, as I've said before, we're looking for collaboration and cooperation. We're not trying to wrest the building. From the library. But if, if they, if they, if that's the way they can save it. Is to give us that agency, then, then that's fine as well. So, so we're not looking to, uh, to enforce that. What the commission, what the planning and zoning commission can do is oblige them to reuse it. Or deny their application. That's the, that's the village district regulation. And I mean, I, I did hear, hear early this evening, part of the. Part of the request to amend the regulations is to get around those village district guidelines. Because they sprinkled throughout those guidelines is. The, the obligation to, to preserve that heritage, that, that. That structure, buildings of that type.
You really, I, I still, it's unclear what the answer to my question is, is that the. Owner of the building, the library can simply reconstruct it and leave it vacant. They can just leave it there as a shell. And it's unclear to me how we can force them to use it in some particular manner. Preserve it perhaps, but, uh. To use it in some other manner, it's, it's really unclear and, um, requiring it that it be transferred, uh. Ownership de shirt, de jure de facto to someone else is unclear. Also, I'd also note that the village guidelines on preservation, which you are correctly highlighting, uh, it, it is not a, um. Uh, must check issue, but one of the issues. One of the key things we look at is again, planning and development is to try to balance development and, uh, preservation. And so it's this type of balance that we often have to deal with. In, in looking at various applications, and that is one of the issues, issues here. What are the? Benefits we would have from taking one track versus the benefits of another track? And it's this balance that. Um, at least I am wrestling with here, uh, on the commission.
Uh, it's Pat Sullivan again, but demolishing it is not a, a compromise or, um. You know, the, the, the commission's obligation in this kind of an application is to exercise its discretion. And if there's a, a balancing test, it's not to say, well, we'll balance it all the way in the direction of an, of an applicant who wants to remove. Uh, historic and architecturally significant, you know, building and a piece of the heritage and culture of, of the town in New Canaan. So if there's going to be a balancing, then there should be a balancing and not, uh, you know. Sort of resorting to just, just removing it. And we're just. We're trying to be helpful in that direction. Obviously, we're advocating for a particular position, but we're trying to be. We're trying to be helpful. So I do, I do believe the commission has the discretion to tell the library. That the building needs to be saved. Um, and if we can help in any way there. We're prepared to do that.
It would also, on that, on that point, that the commission would also have the, uh, ability to say the building does not need to be saved. Because of the benefits of the, um. Plan that the, uh, library has if this commission decides that those benefits outweigh, uh, any, uh. Costs, uh, of doing so.
Come, the commission, in, in this situation, the commission has discretion. But that discretion is supposed to be, you know, is not supposed to be abused. It's supposed to be exercised. And you have guidelines in the village district. You have guidelines throughout your regulations about what should be done in a situation. Like this, and that's, that's all, you know, we're asking you to exercise that discretion. So, but we appreciate all the time that you've given us. Um, I mean, I do want to thank you. This, it was an extraordinary. Amount of, of time and you have, um, you've really listened, um, and that's, uh, that's much appreciated.
Thank you. Um, any other questions for Preservation Alliance guys?
I had one final question just on, if, if the building isn't being used as a library and it's being rented out and doesn't have public ask, uh, access. Couple of things, uh, have come up tonight. One was the library said, we're willing to work with anyone and enable it to be moved. And. What I heard in the last meeting was no way, no how. We might as well tear it down. If it's not moved. So I just wanted to understand, is, is that the position of, of, of this, the group that. There's no compromise on its location. It must be torn down or it must be torn down or saved in situ?
Well, the alliance has never, has, has never said that it would be a good idea to tear it down or that that would be a viable option. But having the building anywhere other than the place where it, it's, it was. It was born and lives, um, is not, i- is, is not a viable option.
Okay. So what I'm hearing you say is that. The commission is no way willing to compromise on its location.
Uh, Commissioner Wes Haynes here again. Uh, it, it makes no economic sense to move this building off its site. It's, uh, a very. Large building that would need to be extensively deconstructed to move it off the site and reconstruct it again at enormous cost. Um, at some point, preservation makes no economic sense if you have to basically reconstruct a building, find a new site for a building and relocate it. Uh, it makes perfect economic sense to re, rehabilitate this building on a existing site. I think Mr. Simpson has given us a lot of things to think about, about the quality of the, uh, the proposed lawn. That is being, uh, as a drainage swale and a public space. There are many questions about it. I think that the nineteen thirteen library on its site is a viable alternative to, uh, to replacing it with what's proposed by the library for the law.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, Attorney Sullivan, Mr. Haynes, everybody else on the Preservation Alliance team. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Um. Commissioners, I have an idea to run by you. And this is in my vein of trying to potentially come up with solutions. And as I'm thinking about this. You know, I, I think we are, given who we are, we are well-equipped. To think about. How this relates to the P O C D. And the totality of the regulations and all of the other decision criteria. That we are very, very experienced in. Where I'm struggling. Is more of the basics of the moving parts. Of thinking about and what it costs and what needs to be done in terms of saving, potentially saving, retaining. The nineteen thirteen library. We've received plenty of reports. We've re, re, we've received, you know, as we just concluded here, you know, very, very different views. And so one of my ideas is we hire at the applicant's expense, which is covered in the regulations. A consultant. That will come in and help us assess. This decision and, and assess such things as, okay. You know, what would it cost? To retain the building, you know, what are the, the ver, the incremental demolition costs? Um, what are the retrofit costs, um, potentially? You know, a view of how does it fit? You know, vis a vis a modern library. Um. So we, you know, and it, I think on, it, it would be, have to be a fairly rushed job. Um, the planner and I have been talking about this. I think the planners also received some other help and, and so we potentially. There are firms we could use. Um, and as I said earlier, there's a fair amount of data and information already in the record. Um, so it's an idea. Any thoughts?
Excellent idea.
Love it. Like it a lot.
Anybody not like it?
John, it's Kent Turner. Um, I think it's a, an excellent idea and, uh, something that, uh, we should move forward with very quickly.
Okay. Okay. Um. Uh, Mr. Smith, uh, you're aware that, um, as part of the application process, um. We can, we can go ahead and do this and, and it is on your dime, so to speak.
Yes, I, I, we, we, the, the library is well-aware of, uh, of that, that, uh. Condition that, that you can do and, and, you know, receive independent advice of your own consultant at, you know, at our expense. Uh, we just ask that you do it as promptly as, as possible as you just implied because. If, if you granted it to us, we're, we're looking at a clock where materials are going up every day in price.
Yeah. Now, the, the, the commission is, is completely aware and, and very, very sensitive to the clock, no doubt.
Sir Chairman, what in specific would the mandate be to this consultant?
I'm not positive. Um, I gave you a decent shot at it. Let me defer to Mr. Radman. What, what thoughts would you have on that, Dan? Or, or Kent as well? You guys are, you gentlemen are both experienced in this.
Oh, there's Kent. I'll take a stab at it. I, I think there's, uh, obviously a big disparity. In the estimates that have come from the library side and the preservation alliance side as to the. Um, cost for retaining the building. Um. I think i- if we, if we were able to get a, um, a, a consultant in there to do a cost analysis, uh, in. Independent party cost analysis on what it would take to do that. That would help us. Better judge our decision on. The viability of keeping this existing structure. Um. I, I personally, I, I, again, I'm, I'm going back to my original point that I brought up. I think it's, it's less about. Keeping an independent standalone structure. It's more about the entirety of the, of the library design. And being able to incorporate the existing structure. But that's my opinion.
And you would include the ma, you would include not just the cost, but what you just said. As well, right? Views on, okay.
Yes, because. You, you know, the, the, the cost for this library from when we last saw it a number of years ago is almost doubled. Um, yet the library has become slightly smaller with no underground parking. So there's. There's a lot of questions when it comes to, um. Where the current budget for the library stands and the feasibility and, and how these costs are impacting some of the design decisions. Here, um, we don't, we don't necessarily have a big purview over what the costs necessarily need to be. Um. You know, the old mantra of the planning and zoning commission is, uh, the costs really don't matter to us, right? It's more about the. Regulations, the integrity of things like the P O C D and maintaining the integrity of the town and the architectural significance of certain buildings. Um, but when it comes to this particular project, uh, because of the contribution, the public. The, the town's contribution to the project. the the town's contribution to the project and the investment the town's making into it, I think we i- it's it's the necessary due diligence on our part to understand these cost implications.
The cost then would be to keep this as a separate building unless we want to mandate this consultant to try to redesign the library to incorporate the old building into the new building. Which I guess is doable, but that's that's a lot to ask. But it would be turned into shell space, I assume. I I don't think you're talking about fit out or tenant improvements because we're not sure what it's going to be used for. So there's a lot of guestimates there and no one has, I've heard, has come up with some definitive idea and what to do with the building. They're talking about an art gallery and a office for a not-for-profit and something else. And so all that fit out is is unclear what that cost would be. And then, so we we know that it's going to be some number and perhaps a large number. So it becomes one of gee, it's just so expensive. It's just not worth it. Is that where this thing's going? I'm I'm not sure what we do with the answer if we end up with that big number on on retrofitting this building and then, so what do we do with that?
It's it's also a big ask of a of a cost consultant to be able to assemble those kinds of numbers on things that are not drawn. Right? To to be able to do a sidewalk and make a lot of assumptions. That's that's really hard. I think what we're gonna end up with more is an analysis per square foot rather than some sort of a concrete detailed cost analysis. And what I mean by that is they'll look at it from a, I think how they'll do it is they'll look at it from a standpoint of approximately cost per square foot to keep the independent freestanding structure. Reinforce it, rebuild it, make it make it a viable, occupiable space. That's some number. And then there would be a different number that you would say, well, if I was to incorporate it into a new building structure, that new building structure, and I'm making up numbers, that new building structure is six hundred dollars a square foot and the the inclusion of the rehabilitated nineteen thirteen library. That would be five hundred dollars a square foot, whatever the numbers are. And you might be able to understand the impact on a per square foot basis rather than any kind of a more detailed budget analysis. Obviously, the library has the advantage of having construction, well, some level of design development drawings that they can put numbers to on the current design. So it's 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 gonna be a lot of guessing.
Those advocating the preservation of the old library, the nineteen thirteen and nineteen thirty-six library, this really both buildings. Is that they want to return it to the status quo ante, what it looked like in nineteen thirty-six, which is a standalone building. This is what their picture looks like and what they have said. Incorporating it physically into another building, which it is now, does not seem to be on their agenda, at least I haven't heard it. So, okay, someone comes up with, does an analysis and sticks a pin in a number. The number is, I don't know, three million dollars to put the walls back up and and do whatever needs to be done. I'm picking a number off the air. So, okay, it's three million dollars.
Yep.
Oh, what again, what what do we do with this? And essentially what we'd be saying if we decide that the building must be maintained is to say to the library, you need to spend three million dollars to preserve this building or we're not going to approve the rest of your uh rest of your deal. That's it. So let's say the number is five million. Does that change our thinking? Or it's ten million? Does that change our thinking? If the issue is, well, none, the dollar shouldn't shouldn't matter, why do we need to know what the dollar is?
Yeah, I it's it's Kent Turner. May I make a suggestion? I think we're we're getting a little sidetracked on the original desire and the need to have this cost estimate verified. You know, if we if we just try to do an apples-to-apples comparison with the costing that's been done by and then have it done by the independent person, we'll better understand, you know, what reality is. As far as the add-ons that Dan and and John, which are what you're talking about, I think that's a another discussion that we should probably have about scoping. What what beyond confirmation of the original cost estimate do we need to really perform? You know, do we need to look at all these different scenarios of what it's going to cost to preserve the building? I don't know. I I I'm not sure that that's going to be fruitful.
I mean, John, the other thing that that strikes me is is the library has made the point that they're going to lose their fundraising momentum. If if this sort of condition is put upon them. So, I mean, I'd like the analysis to include, okay, what is the risk to the project being sunk by this condition? So a fundraising expert, we hire them to say you attribute a three million dollar cost and a five hundred thousand dollar carrying cost per year in this kind of construct, what's the likelihood the library will be able to raise the twenty-five million to get the project up?
Well, I I don't know. I guess my immediate reaction is I don't I don't know how somebody could figure that out without knowing, you know, the innards of where the library stands and its fundraising activities.
Wh- wh- when I hear the arguments both from the library, the applicant, as well as the Preservation Alliance and others in town, I what I hear boiled down is this, the people who are advocating that the nineteen thirteen and nineteen thirty-six library be preserved. That's it. It needs to be preserved in its entirety, essentially as it was in nineteen thirty-six. This was the shell. In C two, that's it. Period. Other things they probably have an idea on, but that's that's the that that's that's the hill they want to die on. The library has said that, given what their program is and the physical site and so forth, is that the library, the older library needs to be raised and a lawn put in, which would have various programmatic benefits. And I I I'm I'm struggling to find how the commission becomes Solomon and, you know, splits the baby here. I I would love to hear an argument and how to do that. I really would like to have that solution, but I'm I'm really struggling and I'm I'm not sure how a cost estimate is it going to help us split the baby on this one? If there is a way, I'm I'm be thrilled to hear it, but I I just I just don't know how.
Okay, well, my idea was it's not just a costed estimate in and of itself. It's it's a little more creativity than just that. And it's it's an assessment. And look, we don't have to do it. If you all don't want to do it, let's not do it. I'm I'm I think all of us are stuck between a rock and a hard place.
I agree. I agree.
So my what I'm trying to do, and and again, we don't have to do this. You know, part of my job as chair is to come up with ideas. And part of the idea, quite frankly, is to potentially help supplement and support whatever decision we make. But look, if if you you know, if if it's not helpful, then then we'll pass. We'll save the library money.
This is Krista Nielsen. Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that I think what you're proposing makes sense to the extent that we need to probably have a finding that either, you know, preserving the nineteen thirteen library was feasible and possible and whatever financially, you know, possible versus that it wasn't. And, you know, we have, as you already said, two very conflicting viewpoints on that and to have some sort of dependent third party that we could put our stake in the ground wherever it may fall, I think could be useful. The other question I have, and I have no idea, like, I'm just spitballing here. I have no idea if there's any precedent for this, but like is there any way to require the two very disparate groups that we have before us to go to some sort of mediation to try and find some common ground? Like, I don't, I have no idea if that's possible, but it's just a thought.
I floated that idea and it didn't get very far. Lynn, did I discuss that with Ira or not? Because it The idea of an arbitration process?
I think we, I think it was briefly discussed, but the suggestion was that, you know, we we keep it open for another month and and tell the both parties to sort of try and find a way to sit down and talk to each other. See if they could come to something on
Not a formal arbitration, not a not a condition by the commission that they have to go to arbitration.
No. Exactly, yeah.
Krista, that's what you were sort of spitballing on, right?
Right, that's what I was asking.
Yeah. I mean, we can, we can run it by council again. So. Okay, what do you guys want to do?
So I was just going to say, I I think Ms. Nielsen's ideas is a really well-intended one and a thoughtful one, but it seems like the differences here are completely irreconcilable. They're just mutually contradictory, the way I've heard it. And so I think to Mr. Goodwin's point, I think it would be helpful, given the amount of deviation between the figures that we're getting from the library and the figures that we're getting from the nineteen thirteen group and N C P A to at least supplement in an objective way, that part of the conversation with an outside consultant. And maybe that provides a little bit of breathing room for some of this contention, contentiousness to mitigate a little bit and you know, at least allows us to kind of contemplate what we want to do next. Still expeditiously, but not in as heated an environment as where we are at this moment, I hope.
Okay, so we go ahead with it. Let's do a straw vote. It's not an official vote. Good idea to go with the consultant. Raise your hand. Come on, Mr. Chris, put up your hand.
Can we can we expand the scope, Mr. 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 Chairman, to incorporate some of these other elements?
Well, let's do the following. We have
What is the mandate going to be, which is my question? What exactly are we voting on?
We're not voting on, we're not voting on anything. It was a straw vote.
Okay, fair. I got it. Okay, let
What we're trying to, what in my mind is, and we, you know, others can provide input. I would like to know the costs. And I also think that it would be good to get an expert opinion on the design element as well. The library is saying that, you know, the position of the building effectively ruin, not ruins the project, but detracts from the project. And the Preservation Alliance is saying that the continued preservation of the building right where it is fits to the project. And and now that I'm talking through this, the other thing I'd be interested to get a second opinion on is now my understanding is the cost would be prohibit prohibitively detrimental. But I think it'd be interesting to get a cost on, you know, let's say you moved it three blocks, you know, just making that up. You know, is that feasible?
Well, John, Chairman, I'm sorry. The on on the moving, I I did do some research on that in the last couple of weeks and it's not uncommon to move masonry buildings generally in a straight line. You know, for example, if we were to move it south two hundred yards on Main Ave to the end of Center Lot, which is empty right now, it would be in a straight line on rails. And likely cost, you know, give or take eight hundred to one point two million based on some numbers I saw from Wolf Moving in Vermont. They do brick moving, they do masonry building moving. So if you have that building facing Main Ave for eight hundred thousand on a new foundation, you know, that would seemingly be an interesting position.
Mr. Chairman, in effect, you want to appoint a special master. Against the legal term, which courts do, who would provide a cost benefit analysis on this with the cost being not only dollar cost, but cost and opportunity cost of of losing the the so-called town green and gaining the preservation of an older building.
Think it would be interesting to have a independent opinion on that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we good? Okay, great. Obviously, Lynn's going to work on it post haste. Anybody has a view, provide your input to her. Commissioners, any other departing thoughts for the applicant? Okay, I guess not. I have a couple of thoughts, though. One is I have to say I'm disappointed in the pace of the traffic work. This has been being worked on since June, since we were advised that the underground parking did not work. Mr. Galante was brought in last June. I have been in and out of conversations with the planner, with Mr. Galante, with Mr. Mann. And I'm I'm just surprised that we have not made more progress. And 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 I, from having listened to and and asked Mr. Galante questions on multiple applications over the years, I have a very high opinion of Mr. Galante. And at this point, to find out that we now have to make the center entrance into South Avenue two-way because we're going to have levels of service of Ds on Maple Street going into South, backing up into the drop-off area. I'm just it, you know, I'm I'm just really disappointed. And and I know that the planner and Mr. Galante have been trying to push this for months. We're down to four weeks. If we do a special meeting, we're down to two weeks. So that has got to get resolved. That's about safety. That's it. That's the project right there. Second thing is, and I think we're talking about this, is I think everybody needs to think about flexibility. Mr. Chris was saying, we're being put into the position of having to split the baby because I just, I don't see flexibility on on either side. And once again, we have four weeks. I have told before this, I've told multiple parties that my preference is for the commission to be helped with a solution. And not to have the commission forced to impose a solution. And I've told both parties previous to the opening of this application, that if you put us in this position, you may not like what the answer is. So I urge all parties involved to think about some flexibility. And another thing I think about is is I do, you know, we all write checks. I I know that there's a lot of funding here at stake. And, you know, I would urge everyone and even people who who, you know, who are making big, big donations. You know, to think, to just remember that however we come out here, there will be, you know, your role in in contributing to the history of New Canaan, you know, will be established, no matter how this project comes out. So, you know, I would encourage flexibility there as well. So, no, those are my thoughts. Anybody else? Okay, this application's continued. So let's make a decision. We continued. We continued seven eleven Silver Mine. Let's make a decision on one seventeen Clearview Lane. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
I move we approve.
Mr. Chris, reasons for approval?
I, I see this uh proposed pool being very well sheltered by already existing well-established bushes and trees. It's a heavily wooded area. The, we received no negative feedback from the neighbors. Looking at the uh satellite view, it seems to be really not very visible at all by the neighbors. And so I think the, any negative effects as far as visual, you know, view shed on, on adjoining properties is gonna be de minimis uh at best, and I see no reason not to approve it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chris. Second.
Second.
Uh, I saw Mr. Turner. Um, any additional input?
No.
Okay, exhaustion rules. I call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Claire Tuscornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. The motion carries. Next item is three sixty-five Lupe Wood Road. I am hereby recused. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Art, I think you are seated for uh Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
And I believe that we should have Chris seated for the uh open slot.
Okay, I can, I can be seated.
Mr. Ward, that's how we seated them last time. That's how you seated them last time.
We didn't have the open slot last time, though, did we?
Um, it wasn't open, but uh Ms. was lucky, left a meeting.
Well, yeah, you're true. You're right, you're right. Well, okay, let's uh, the hour is obviously late. We're not going to be making a definitive decision tonight. I think what uh we should try to do is to give some better direction, some better guidance uh to Lynn. Uh, there are, as you all recall, there are basically three issues that the applicant uh has sought us to make decisions on. Uh, and I think that we can look at them separately. Uh, and I would like to see if we can give Lynn some sense of where the commission might be. And, and I'll take them one by one. I think from our prior discussion, perhaps the easiest one to address at the moment is the request for a condition nineteen modification, where basically it would change the current no-for-profit organizations to be involved in Grace Farms. The last time, just from the discussions among us, it was my sense that the commission was, would be very reluctant to change that original finding. As you recall, from the nineteen, are they the, the twenty? Was it twenty thirteen and then modified again in twenty seventeen? The nonprofit or the for-profit corporation or organization involvement was uh not acceptable. Is, is there anyone who perhaps, you know, wants to argue to the contrary, or it, it does, is that look like, and I'm not, we're not taking a vote? And uh everyone will be free to change their mind when we do come to a point where we have a, a vote. But is it fair to?
I agree with you, Dick. I think that was the consensus of the, of the commission.
Okay, so I think that one is pretty clear for Lynn to sort of know where we're heading.
I think so.
I agree.
I agree. Same, agreed.
Okay, uh, let's quickly go to, well, the next one, which I also think is perhaps fairly easy for us, uh, is the reporting requirements that are in condition ninety-two. A- as you know, there's a monthly reporting requirement as to what the uh Grace Farms expects or plans to do for the future month, and then to give details as to what in fact took place in the prior month. And it's become a, a a real obligation for uh Lynn to have to analyze and make sense of these reports. And uh the uh Grace Farms has, wants to make it, I think that their application is biennial. I think that uh we talked a bit last time about perhaps considering a quarterly report where they would look, they would have to let Lynn be able to look forward for the next quarter as to what they plan to do and to provide information as to what in fact took place in the prior quarter. That would apparently take a, a good deal of the burden off of Lynn. And uh I, I think it's something that perhaps makes sense. Is there anyone who has a disagree, well, I don't, I don't mean disagreeing, but maybe a, a contrary view?
The only thing I'd add to that was the concept of also potentially simplifying the reports to make them easier to use.
Fine. Okay, I think that uh, I think that gives Lynn a pretty good idea as to what we're sort of considering. Again, this is not a vote. And anyone can have a different opinion. That leaves just the last issue, which is the eight and two Pudding Hill. Uh, right now, the conditions that exist, the special permit require it to be used solely as a sort of a single-family residence. Uh, limited parking, the access is to be used by maintenance and construction workers only. The uh Grace Farms wants to move their religious staff group, which I, if I recall, it's like perhaps fifteen people to turn the Pudding Hill into basically office space and to add parking uh for uh that's that kind of staff move. And then it opens up for Grace Farms to do, I'm not sure quite what they plan to do with the uh East uh building from which these uh staff, religious staff group would come. There are perhaps several issues involved. And I think we touched on them. One is traffic. One is parking, as you may recall, the existing special permit, which now does go back to the uh twenty thirteen, and it didn't change in the twenty seventeen revisions. There was a maximum parking spaces of two hundred and twenty-six. I think I have that number right. Yes, I believe so. The maximum of two hundred and twenty-six. One thought last time that was sort of kicked around is that, well, uh perhaps we leave it up to Grace Farms as to where they're gonna put their parking, but it still has to be two hundred and twenty-six since eighty-two Pudding Hill is in fact part of Grace Farms. That was joined into the complete property. So that, that's perhaps one way of looking at it. Then another way of looking at it would be that, well, if they're gonna use it as uh office space, and they're gonna have these up to fifteen staff people use that facility rather than the East Building, perhaps they still will have to park in the main parking area. And then either with the Grace Farms providing golf cart transportation to take them to eighty-two Pudding Hill, or they walk on a nice day, a nice walk. Uh, then that way, the security in the main entrance is maintained. If there's increased parking at eighty-two Pudding Hill, then it raises the whole question of security. Who parks there? How do you keep out public? Maybe, you know, public could say, hey, this is, I'm gonna just park there and I'll walk around the property. So I think we have to perhaps uh give Lynn a little bit of guidance as to what kind of a condition we would want if we approve using eighty-two Pudding Hill for office space. Or it's denied, that it just the, the original condition remains intact.
I have some conditions that I'd like to suggest that they want to turn it into a parish house, in effect, and.
Okay, John speaking, I, I guess we have.
Speaking, yes. They want uh Grace Farms wants Grace Church to turn that in Pudding Hill, eighty-two Pudding Hill into the parish house. And as explained uh to this commission, if I recall, that uh there is much counseling and other activities that many people feel want to keep private a bit, and I, I get that. And that, that, that makes sense to me. And so uh turning this into a parish house, which is de facto office space, I, I, I can, I can wrap my mind around that. What I would suggest, though, are a few things. One is, since they will need, they will need onsite parking because there may be handicapped people and so forth who are showing up and golf carts in the snow, I just don't see that working. And so whatever number of spaces that are for parking created there get taken away elsewhere. So the aggregate number of spaces on the property stay the same. They're just moving some from one area to another. So some other parking areas would need to be lost. We can have a conversation on what lost means, whether you put cones on it or you take out a jackhammer and rip up the asphalt. It's a different conversation, and we can have that. But that seems okay. The security issue I would suggest is this, is that it would be uh gated with a key card and a uh face cam on the key card slot as well as a scene camera, similar to what they have at the main entrance now. And it would be used by not only parish personnel as well as parishioners, but also by maintenance staff and security, which is occurs now. And uh people who work there, which would be maintenance staff, security, and also the parish, would have a key card, so they're logged in and out, just like they would be in the main entrance. And if a parishioner shows and needs uh for a meeting, you push the button, you speak to someone inside the building, they buzz you in. And that person will be, would be logged in, and we would have a photograph of the person going in, so we know who's going in and out. And we won't have a, a leak in the security system. So that would be my suggestion, how to handle this.
Other thoughts or?
Yeah. Dick, I can't, um further discussion on the ADA and the handicap, there's a, a bit of a dilemma. The uh institution is not required to provide or conform to ADA requirements as a religious institution.
Okay.
The, their current plans do not conform by any means of, of ADA. Uh, there are stairs, uh, the bathrooms don't uh qualify or don't meet design standards. So, you know, it's a bit of a contradiction to say that we need to provide handicap parking when a disabled person cannot really use the facility. So I think we need to maybe think that one out a little more, and I just bring it to everybody, buddy's attention.
That's a fair point, Commissioner Turner. I, I, I take it. So we don't require handicap parking onsite for that, that particular location.
Or we can strongly suggest that they provide it, and um they should bring the facility up to ADA requirements.
True, uh suggesting it is, is fine with me.
As a, as a, uh, an institution that is for the betterment of humanity, um, I find it, you know, very unusual that uh they wouldn't want to do that.
You're talking for eighty-two Pudding Hill, or are you talking to the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, this is Claire Tuscornia. I, I don't know if I like the idea of taking pictures of someone who's going somewhere for counseling. I just think maybe that kind of infringes on privacy a little bit. I, I'm all for like a sign-in, like a login and like calling up and getting let in by um like an intercom, but I don't think we need to take people's pictures, especially.
It's now, when they come in.
What's that?
It occurs right now. So if you're a parishioner going in for counseling, let's say, you have to go into the main gate and they log you in, and the whole air, whole scene is, is photographed. So it occurs now, is my understanding.
I still think it sounds wrong.
Ask me if I'm wrong, but I'm just saying this is the current condition.
I don't know.
Well, the real requirement would be to control access so that public can simply drive in, park, and then wander around the premises. So with a ga- a gate and a buzzer.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, a gate and a keypad would, would meet the requirements, and there's already a gate there, so it's already appears the same way for someone driving by.
Yep, and if there was any additional security requirements similar to what Mr. Chris is suggesting, that would be under the purview of Grace Farms to institute that next level of security.
What I was suggesting is that the security uh protocols that are in place now, which is you have to be let in, they take information from you, and the scene at the entry point is photographed, would be replicated at this ingress as well.
Under, understood, but has.
That's where I'm coming from on this.
Sure.
Similar level of control.
I, I don't recall, but during the original presentation, did Grace Farms actually stipulate what the access controls were going to be for this Pudding Hill lot?
They did not. I brought it up, as I remember.
Okay.
They uh uh didn't go into detail on security issues. Uh, the idea I have is that the security protocols that are in place at the main gate would be replicated for this entrance, albeit the only people would be allowed in would be staff and uh parish workers and parish members who are let in by parish workers being buzzed in from the house.
Well, we could phrase the, we could phrase the condition of approval exactly like that.
Sounds good. Lynn, does that give you some help?
Um, it does, actually. Um, I, I mean, I consulted with town council, and I would come up with a uh draft resolution, which would, it sounds like um the commission is leaning towards approving the eighty-two um Pudding Hill proposal and um not granting the proposal for a for-profit, and then allowing the modification to quarterly reporting to move into the future. And so the um, I think um, Mr. Cassavant, you made this comment about. Mr. Castan, you made this comment about cleaning up the quarterly reporting. And do you, do you want to clarify your point? Did you have a, any, any suggestions on?
Yeah, I, I, I think that the utility of the reporting is higher. When in fact it is summarized with the ability of you or other parties to get. Additional detail if they need it. But if you have an array of quarterly reports. Which provides summary activity, which can then be validated if needed, it would probably. More effectively serve the purpose and reduce administrative burden for everybody involved. We should be open to that sort of streamlining of process.
I would just add, add the point on putting hill is we need to make a decision on the parking issue. On whether this is a net addition to parking onsite or. One, it it new parking at putting hill, you eliminate parking in the rest of the site.
Uh, John, John, I, I just have a quick observation is that. If they're talking one or two parking places and it creates one or two new permanent jobs. I'm not sure I'm totally distressed by that. Perhaps they should provide a clarification of why they need. An additional spot or two. I mean, if they actually are, you know, I'd be ashamed for us to. Cause a job not to happen because we don't want a parking spot for somebody's, you know, Toyota Corolla to commute to work.
I didn't, I didn't get a sense that it's really a relocation of people from building X to building Y. And so the, the people who are doing their thing are doing their same thing, just in a different location. That's how it was explained to me and how I remember it. I asked the other commissioners whether they heard differently.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
One thing, Dick, that I would raise that was a question that was. I mean, granted, I wasn't on the commission when the long deliberations were, were heard on, on Grace Farms, but. One, one concept I wasn't quite clear on was this concept of, of increased intensity. And as, as connected to events, but I, I feel like increased intensity also. Is related to parking capacity and, and square footage. So in effect, by moving putting hill off of the single family register and adding it to the commercial. Square footage and therefore opening up more flexibility in the, in the barns. And not, not changing the parking or essentially opening up. Capacity for intensity or higher intensity of use. So.
No, your, your point is correct. One of the original findings. States that parking is a key factor in managing the level of activity at the site. And that's why the two hundred and twenty-six parking spaces was sort of created as a, as a max. Because there is a relationship between parking, in other words, vehicles and intensity of use. So the idea of if they're gonna have more new parking spaces at eighty-two putting hill. They have to give up like a number of parking spaces at the west, east barn, east wing. And keep the two twenty-six as the max. I think, John, that's what we were. Saying, I believe.
What I was suggesting is that the aggregate site parking limit be maintained.
Right.
Moving it from point A to point B.
Correct.
Yes.
Does that seem to be a general feeling of the commission?
Yes.
Lynn, I.
Agree with that.
Can you just repeat that point, Mr. Ward?
Well, the, the maximum number of parking spaces for arms will remain two hundred and twenty-six. If they wish to put some new additional spaces at putting hill, they're gonna have to reduce a like number. Elsewhere so that the max remains the same.
Okay.
I would also note, Commissioner Ward, is that in the application from Grace Farms. The parking area they're intending to construct at, at Puddin Hill is going to have some retaining walls. Uh, which I assume will be nice fieldstone retaining walls. But also they were going to put a berm in with some plants on it in order to help shield the area. And provide some screening and the details on that have not been determined. And I asked about what kind of plants you're gonna have and so forth and. They essentially turned it over to us to make some decision or decisions for them on, on plants. And I think I would like to do that. And ensure that the berm is a, a nice berm with some nice native plants. Something in keeping with their own environmental standards of enhancing the environment.
Could you give Lynn some guidance on that?
I can speak with her regarding maybe some choices on this. I made the, I did, they were open to direction from us on what plants to put in. They, they weren't fussy on the issue as I remember it. As long as they got to. Do what they want to do at putting hill. That was not something they really cared much about.
Was there dumpster screen? Is there dumpster screening or anything like that?
There was some dumpster screening. I don't remember the details in the dumpster screening. I, I remember more about the berm that's going to be put in. Is there a member? It's to be east. Of the lot. Uh, and it would be a berm of maybe a foot or two high and then we have some plants on it to provide some screening from that area. We can check the record on it, but as far as the, the, the choice of really how this can be constructed, they really left it up to us.
Commissioner. I think we should probably elaborate on that condition as to the maintenance equipment. Any kind of. Emergency generator, any, anything that they're gonna store in that yard. Shall be screened from any adjacent property and not visible.
Like we should turn, as I remember it, there is a, a work shed there now that has some maintenance equipment. I can't remember the details off the top of my head. But yes, I think that's something should be. We should be precise about. I, I concur with you. Yeah, there's the berm on the right. Yeah, that's the berm.
If I understand correctly, Kent Turner, the parking lot that we see to the lower right, that area. Would be eliminated.
Actually, that's the new lot as I understand it. There's some parking.
Yeah.
This is. Yes, this is the proposed.
Right. So our condition is that those parking spaces would disappear.
Well, no, no, they could have those parking spaces, but they would have to then remove. A like number of spaces from elsewhere on their property.
Uh, okay.
So those spaces would be part of the two twenty-six max.
Fair enough. Good.
And if you look at the, the parking lot here at about the ten o'clock, you'll see that small building, that's the shed. Uh, which I think is still there and they just want to maintain it. But I just, I can't recall off the top of my head. The, the details on that. I just remember the berm, which is at about the, the two o'clock. You can see it on an angle there. That's the berm.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I think we should turn the meeting back over to the chairman and wrap it up. No comments heard?
Good job.
Has the chairman already gone to bed?
Chairman fell asleep. Okay, let's bring it on. We actually, unfortunately, we have two more things. Item number eight. Thank you, Dick. Item number eight, one oh seven Main Street upon application Elizabeth and Jessica Arundel authorized agents for Rob. Ian Nazzo, owner's site plan approval section forced to see seven to allow personal service establishment with retail. Do we have the applicant here, Lynn?
Um, yes. Just, um, Jessica.
Everybody, this is Jessica and Liz Arundel. Thank you so much for staying up late for us.
Thank you. Do you have a revised site plan for us?
Yes, we do. We sent it to Lynn. So we worked very closely with our designer to make sure that the specs. Work in accordance with some of the concerns that you voiced at the last meeting. So you'll see some shaded areas in the front and the back, and I'd like to walk you through some of those. There's a total of one thousand eight hundred and sixty-two square feet in this particular space on the first floor. Of which we'll have. One thousand six hundred and sixty-two usable square feet once we build out an eighty bathroom. And then like a little storage room in the back. So we have included three hundred and forty-two square feet of retail space upon the entrance. You'll see that's the area that's shaded. We moved the stations back away from the windows, so those will not be seen. From street view. This will account, this particular space will account for just about twenty and a half. Percent of retail space usage. In the back, you'll see a little shaded area that will also provide an additional one hundred and ten square feet of retail space. That is separate from the front because actually that's where we do our. Our wigs and our hair extensions and our products and our tools. So in total, we've, we've really tried to kind of accommodate. Most of the concerns that you guys had voiced last time. And, and spreading out retail as far as we possibly can while still having a plan that will work for our business model.
Okay, question for Lynn. Lynn, does this work to our regulation requirements?
Yes, it does. The, the requirement was either fifteen feet or twenty percent. And they've exceeded the twenty percent.
Okay. Any questions for the?
Wasn't it fifteen feet or twenty percent, twenty percent, whichever is greater?
Uh, yes, and they're over twenty percent, so. They're, they comply.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, great. Do I have a motion for approval or denial? Was that Dick? No, it's Art. I, I moved it for approval with a specific note that the work by the applicant benefited from Mr. Radman's guidance. Okay, great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I saw Kent raise his hand. Okay, I call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Larissa Cornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
Okay, carries unanimously. Item number nine, eleven Farm Road upon application Suzanne Harrison applicant Tiger Man Director of Public Works Town in New Canaan. Sign, owner's sign per permit approval of New Canaan High School, eleven Farm Road Tiger.
Uh, thank you very much. Suzanne had to jump off at about eleven thirty. So she couldn't wait any longer. This is for a sign that will be installed on the. On the frontage of the high school. The concern is that people don't know that it's a high school as you're driving past. So the thought is to. Put a nice sign up along the wall, the barren wall on, on the northern edge. It's fully supported by the BOE. And uh. Thank you, Lynn. So this gives you a nice look as to what it'll, it'll appear from the, from the street, from Farm Road as you're driving past. And we're hoping for, for commission's approval. If you have any questions on each thing.
Any questions for Tiger, guys?
Will this be illuminated?
No.
Sorry. Illuminated lighting. Illuminated, oh, sorry. No.
No, it's not illuminated at all.
And so the lettering is mounted on what? Mounted on the wall, on the major wall. So this is an existing wall? This is, this is the existing wall of the high school, yes. And what are the, what's the lettering gonna be made out of? Plastic or?
Plastic.
I think it's, it was like, I think, I think if I recall correctly, it was a plastic or a metal like substance.
Plastic.
No lighting. No lighting. Fine. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I call the question. But.
Who, who made the motion?
Ken.
I just.
Ken, you have a question?
Ken Turner. What, what colors are the letters?
They were red. Were they red?
Okay.
They were red. They were similar to what was, what is on the backside. Right now, you have the home of the Rams on the back, very similar to that installation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But it's, but it's different than what's on the front of the building, right? Like the front, I'm just pulling up like Google Earth or whatever. It, it has like stainless steel. Letters just the left of the entrance. I think if you're looking at kind of the entrance of, of a high school, this will be the same as it is on the, on the, like the sports side by the stadium. So it's like.
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Do I have motion approval, denial?
Move or approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, call the question, John Goodwin, or we vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Larissa Cornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
Carries. Item number ten, Krista, planning subcommittee update.
Uh, so we met this evening at six PM and discussed some specific. Language changes to section seven point six. Of our zoning regulations to basically add a section on included, inclusionary zoning. I think we got some good feedback. I think there's a couple of areas that. We still need to work on and our hope is that if we can work on them. The next month, we can bring it to the full commission for the meeting in May.
Great, thank you, Krista. Administrative actions, Lynn, in ten seconds or less, we need a secretary. What does a secretary of the planning zoning commission do?
Um, they would sign, they, they would, they essentially sign off on the agenda and. The minutes and. All official legal notices. I believe we need an organizational meeting and that the first selectmen needs to run it for.
Oh, I know that, but let's, so they, they sign off on.
Yeah, legal notices, agendas, the minutes, anything that gets posted in the clerk's office, they're, they're the. Official signatory.
Is that, but that's not a lot. Is that a live thing? Do you need to be physically available in town hall during the day?
Um, no, I mean during COVID, we've signed. With, with individuals, then but pre-COVID, the person would. Would only come in and sign off on the actual approvals and they make an appointment with staff to let us know after the vote when, when we had it ready. When they were available.
So if anybody has an interest in being a secretary, let Lynn and I know, please. Um, Lynn, did you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Great, motion to adjourn. Okay, it's been fun. Have a good night, guys. Take care.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.